Okay, hey, everybody. Welcome, welcome. Hi, I'm just at the, uh, there's a special city council meeting tonight here in Harvey. And it is crazy. They already had some sort of secret meeting this past Sunday at three. They had it at, um, City Hall and really didn't tell anybody. So now tonight's meeting is supposed to start at five thirty, which is shortly. We're located at, um, we're located at like about Sibley and I think Lincoln? So yeah, as you can see, there's a pretty big crowd here, right? This is the, like a missionary Baptist church. So that's Sibley right there. And I believe the cross street is Lincoln. So, but yeah, like there's, so we have channel, we see Channel Seven News here so far. We see, um, oops, sorry. Channel Seven News. We see, um, a lot of Harvey police. I saw some sheriffs as well. I know I saw Stephanie Wedeman's here. Keith Price is here too. So it's not just Harvey officials either. So it's interesting. There's Officer Butler. There's, I think, one of the deputy chiefs. Um, but yeah, yeah. So this should be interesting. Oh, here's Harvey Fire people. That's what those, those guys are. This is the one officer I've dealt with her before. So yeah, there's Deputy Chief Charles. Yeah. Hey, Harvey Fire, what's up? Did they tell you guys anything about this, uh, this meeting? I'm so intrigued to see what this is gonna be about, especially after they had, they had a meeting on Sunday. Did you hear about that? So it was a meeting on Sunday? Yes. So it was not, it was not really announced, but they voted to, um, to accept more than a million dollar loan from the county. So, uh, which the county's offering because the property taxes are late. So, um, of itself is not necessarily weird, but like they didn't tell anybody. So I wasn't, I always cover every meeting. I wasn't there. Um, and then they called this. So I'm really,
Me and you both.
I'm very intrigued to see what. Hello.
Any order, anywhere you're recording, you go, go to your left. All this will be to your left. All right? All right. Step to your left, to your recording area. Just go to the record, over here to your left, to the recording area. This is not a recording area. This is not a staging area. Go to the recording area.
Oh, I can still record here though. It's all public. Hey, how are you? You look so lovely. I didn't, it's so early. I didn't really even have time to change. So my work clothes. I said, oh, well, you know what? They're gonna call this. They're gonna get what they're gonna get. No, this is good. Curious to see what they're going with this. So. I know. Oh, good. Vivian's here filming too. Good. Okay. Well, you know, we're, we're here behind you. So we're behind you, Miss Alderwoman. Hey, girl. Hey. I ca- I called you. I figured you were probably in, you were in, in the line. I just wanted to make sure you're okay because this is, this is very all, this is all very unconventional. Like I've never even been to the church before. Oh, you've been here before? How? Oh, I was, I was gonna say, the space is generous. It's nice. Okay. Yeah, it's a nice big space. So again, we don't typically have any city council meetings here, but just so you guys can see kind of the place here. So hey Jabar. Yeah, I don't know. Lots of people here tonight. I see the sheriff. So hi, Wimmy. Um, so I'm very curious as to, to see, you know, what this is all about. Very curious. That's interesting. Um, are we allowed to go further out? Did they tell us that we had to stay further back? Do you guys know? How, how did they say how far they want us to? This little barrier right here? Yeah, this is all highly abnormal. The whole thing. So I don't know what's happening, but I'm glad you guys are here. Oh, Channel Seven. He just said, go to the left. And then we saw, yeah. Hmm. So that means we could go over there too. Cause I think that would probably have better visibility than by the wall, you know? I'm wondering about audio too. Oh, yes, yeah. It's way too far back. I mean, we should really, really like to be able to get closer. Hello. Okay, well.
The public has the right to express their public views.
They're very brave. That's why I have my body camera on just in case.
The charge of public means for its members of the public to submit written statements or make public comments. However, persons in attendance are not allowed to act in an unreasonable manner that alarm or disturb another, provoke a breach of peace. This can include making loud, unusual noises, clapping, sneaking out.
I'm sorry, you go right ahead. Don't let me keep you.
If any person acts in a disordered manner at a public meeting, the mayor and the chairman in order that person to withdraw or be removed from the meeting.
Cause you're right, I should maybe actually do that too.
Remove and fine the disordered conduct statute. Disorderly conduct at a public meeting in Illinois involves any unreasonable behavior that disturbs others or disrupts the meeting. Or they are subject to removal and penalties if they persist after a warning. This can include city employees or other council members. Harvey Police Officers are present at public city council meetings to assist the chairman in preserving order. If any person is ordered to withdraw or leave the meeting by the chairman and refuses, that person would be cited and criminally charged with disordered conduct. The Harvey Police Department can escort the person out of the building. If the person refuses to leave and physically resists the Harvey Police Department, that person would be charged with resisting arrest. Under Illinois law, resisting arrest is defined by knowingly resisting or obstructing a performance by unknown to be that person, a police officer, firefighter, or correctional institutional employee. This constitutes Class A listed warning. The statute that the act of resistance must involve some physical act that imposes an obstacle that may impede, hinder, interrupt, prevent, or delay the performance of an officer's duties. Examples include struggling, resisting, going left, or physically aiding a third party to avoid arrest. Illinois law explicitly states that a person is not authorized to use force to resist an arrest by a known peace officer, even if the arrest is believed to be or is in fact unlawful. Resistance to even an unlawful arrest by a known peace officer is a violation of state statute. Thank you.
So there's McGaughn. There's. Oh, I forgot. Did I? I, I don't see why not. I say do it unless they tell you not to. Here, if you guys just wanted to glance at that, there's really not that much on it, but I just. Mm-hmm. That's okay. I know it's like. It's so awkward because this is not, you know, we're used to doing this at City Hall. It's like, I've never been. Oh, you know what I could do? Hmm, or maybe, I was gonna say, or maybe not. Maybe not. Maybe too squishy. Cause that would be great if that could work. It sort of works. Not, not ideal though. Not ideal. But I'm so glad that you guys came out. So ABC, C W G N, what, um, who's that letter?
I'm Daryl Southtown.
Okay, okay. I'm Ryan. I do the Harvey Circle Society.
Oh, okay. I just literature you on Facebook.
Okay, I thought he looked familiar. Okay. Cause you know, I get so, any day with these requests. Like earlier today, I was just like going through like.
Sure.
I'm like, okay, I try to be diligent about this. How did you all find out? Did the city issue a press release or something?
Uh, it did get announced. It got, I don't know, my manager sent it to me. Um, but I know it was, it was, it was pretty late. It seemed like, you know, I was like, not going to be working anything this afternoon. And then yesterday, pretty late, I got it announced. It's like, hey, can you go out and do this? It looks interesting.
Right. And I'm like, usually like me and some others were relatively in the know. I mean, we're not in with the mayor's people, so he ultimately, you know, knows everything. But I mean, yeah, this is all just so last minute bizarre. But did, was there a press release given to W G N? So that means Clark wants you here. Okay. That's what I was curious about. So, hey, Brian, hey, D I T. Yeah, it's some special meeting and you guys, I'm lost. I don't, I know it's just as little as you do.
Yeah, that's what I got too.
That's, I think it's the same thing.
It's the same as the agenda, yeah.
I hear you guys. I'll show you the agenda really quickly. So they're talking about requesting certification and designation under the financially distressed city law, which I am so confused because Mayor Clark never wants any scrutiny or transparency with city finances. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll move forward. Feel bad. It's like you trap people in here. But yes, I don't know if you, if you guys cover Harvey a lot, but typically the mayor, okay, so the lady's standing on the left. That's my alderwoman in the, in the blouse.
That's Colby Chapman?
Correct.
Okay.
So she, she has been arrested four times. I've been arrested once by the mayor just for asking questions, filming, like nothing crazy. But, um, then to her left is Tracy Key, another alderman. But they're really the only two that ask questions. The other four, they just kinda, they just do whatever the mayor wants. So, um, but yeah, whatever it is, it must mean that, um, the mayor wanted you all here. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. He has, for six years, he's done everything possible to hide city finances from everybody. And he's arrested us. He's ticketed people. He's done everything he can to hide it. So I don't know why, to me, this looks like they're asking to, they're asking the state to come in. So I, I'm just, I'm really lost. I have no idea. It doesn't make sense. After six years of trying to hide everything? I mean, if it's really, you know, I read a little bit about the law, but I didn't have time to really look into that.
Yeah, I also don't know a whole lot about it. Um.
Cause maybe in the end it could be a good thing. I was like, oh. But so many questions. I have so many questions. But I didn't have time to do that much either. Is I wanted to Google to see if any other municipality in Illinois has ever used this.
I mean, I'm sure someone has because it's a law that exists. So somebody that's created for a reason, but.
Cause like I know, I know in Detroit, the state of Michigan with Kwame Kilpatrick, I think his name was. They did a takeover. But I was like, I don't know. I don't, at least I couldn't think of anything off the top of my head, you know, where that's ever happened in Illinois. But yeah, just know if they try anything, just like with the ICE stuff, I just always tell people, especially media observers, like we all have to have each other's back because the police here are not trustworthy. I don't think they would mess with you, but yeah, yeah. You, usually the big media outlets, they won't, but I, but I never trust, never trust them.
I mean, I've, I've never been to a city council meeting before that starts with an extended explanation of the circumstances under which they can throw you out. I have been to a lot of city council meetings in a lot of cities.
Well, do they do that in Chicago? I don't think they do that in Chicago.
I don't think they do.
Cause I need to visit a Chicago city council meeting. I always, I put that on my list. I've never gone. They don't read anything like that, right? That's the crazy thing because my understanding is from the videos I've seen, Chicago meetings get rather wrong this.
But I mean, they got fifty alderpeople. That's very busy and high stakes usually, but they don't do this sort of thing.
And with the audience, right? Like people will make noise, right? See like this dude, he's nuts. Like he, 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 he ticketed people five hundred dollars for talking under their breath. He like had me arrested because I was filming. Um, he's like a mini trauma. That's what I call. Yeah, I was like, this is crazy. Like he wants like silence during the meetings or something. It's really. But no, it's great. I mean, I wish you guys would come every time. Come to every meeting. The more the merrier. We wanna get more attention.
Yeah, I mean, Harvey is my beat now. Basically, there was another reporter coming earlier, but she was pretty overworked. So you will probably be seeing me around, Olivia, yeah.
Okay, I did meet her.
Yeah, we've, we've rearranged the house a little bit, so it's a little more even. So I'm on Harvey now. Did you meet Sam? Or Addison? Okay, I didn't meet her, but I believe she is no longer with the South Town, yeah.
Okay, okay. Cause yeah, for a while, like I would see her meetings. But yeah, do you have a card or something?
I do not. Um, I can give you my phone number though.
Sure. Yeah, or message me or something, but. Why are they meeting in a church? I have no idea, you guys. I'm so sorry. I'm so lost. I wish I had more answers. I'm just so excited because I have two phones now. Somebody donated for me to get a second phone. What's easiest for you?
Uh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, see, Colby put out
Yeah, I saw this.
Some posts and I tried to share. Cause it just so like the, the miscommunication. And she's like, hey, why is it last minute? Like what's the emergency? There is, there is a. It's just sort of weird. And then they already had a secret meeting. On Sunday. And I come home, sit down with someone. And from what I could see from what Colby had shared, they called the meeting. I think the same thing. And they voted to, cause you know how Kwame has this thing now where since the property taxes are behind, they're offering loans.
Right.
Where I'd be approved of a solution to accept a loan over a million. In an interest. Which is, okay, that's fine. But I agreed with what Colby shared where she's working. I can't imagine because basically like where's, I'm not even paying it or no.
She was talking about that a bit outside before she came in here. Yeah.
Just every day, almost, but like we don't really know where the money goes. So that's what's really weird. Yeah, I wonder, so where are you at?
Um, uh, my name's Evy.
E V Y.
Uh, E V Y, yes.
And I do remember seeing that.
Uh, it says I still live in Minneapolis. I have not lived in Minneapolis. I, I mostly use Facebook for like keeping track of groups and stuff.
Well, and, and I'm always like, cause there's always like lots of spammers. So I was like, I remember a person named, but it was Minneapolis. But no, but then I sound like, oh no, it looks legit. The South Town?
Yes.
I real, I hope that they, you guys are still doing local recording. I'm always so worried because with all the corporate consolidation, I mean, yeah. It's just, you know, I'm always concerned that they're just gonna start everything to fall pieces. So I'm glad to see that there's still interest in like.
Yeah, absolutely.
I do my best. And also like, I have a week, I was gonna say, we could always talk. I have a ton of stuff I think we can talk to. Like for instance, someone today, let's say let's talk to someone today was, um,
We call this meeting to order. This is the, this is the City of Harden, Special City Council Meeting. Today is Thursday, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It is five, five thirty-nine, forty-nine P M. Who will call up the council members?
All the women were whispering. Present. All the person Chapman.
Present.
All the person Smith. Present. All the person Key.
Present.
All the person Randall O.
Present.
All the person Rogers.
Present.
Mayor Clark?
Present. All right, because we are in the Lord's House. Hopefully we will not have any shortage of passes or minimum cost. But I'll ask our own pastor, Harrison, would you leave us in the indication?
Yes. Touch me. Father God, we come before you in Jesus' name. We give you praise and we honor you, Father. For truly you are worthy of the praise and all the glory. We thank you, God, for all your many blessings. You have the things that you've done for us, the places you brought us through, the storms you brought us through, and even the fact that you are bringing us to where these times have got to come. We thank you, Father God, for this life, health, and strength throughout truly a wonderful and faithful God. We ask to give you a part in this meeting tonight. Blessings, God, allow us to hear, allow us to say, and God, please cover us in this meeting. Let your presence be here. Let your glory fill this place. Touch this administration and touch this city and all those that are under the saddle of our words. And we give you glory. Oui, 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 in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Point of order. Chair, recommend fourth order.
Thank you, man. I would like to add a motion, um, to make a motion to amend the agenda by adding the automatic comments for all alderpersons to discuss issues and concerns.
This is a special meeting. Special meetings are not bended that particular way as in the same course of regular meetings. They are specific requirements coming to open meetings. As far as we're supposed to be on the agenda, we follow that according to, uh, the law.
Point of information. Okay, as aldermen, are we allowed, are we gonna have an opportunity to say anything about this situation? Cause I feel everybody sitting at this table and it's sort of happened so suddenly, should be able to speak as much as, as long as they want to, because there's a lot of confusion going on right now.
Well, we must do things in order, aldermen. And, um, in course, during the time, if and when we get to that point for a debate, then the council will be able to, um, decide how long it wants to.
Well, a debate is gonna, it's not the same. Okay, I wasn't finished first. Go ahead. Please, go ahead. A debate and a question are not two the same things. A question could be anything in general with the subject at all. A debate is when you're not going to get something and why, or why you're going for something. But to have a debate, you ask a question, the person who says that's not a debate. And then I won't get a chance to say nothing.
Well, thank you very much for that comment. Yes, we know that. And appreciate your admission at this particular time. But I would like prior to going in to, um, the rest of the meeting, if there is no objection, um, so that we can hear from the, the residents or the, or those who are not residents, as far as this particular matter is concerned. If, is there any objection, uh, to allowing public comment to come before the presentation? So that we can hear from those who are concerned. Hearing them, then we move, um, number six, public comment, um, to, um, number five. And number five to number six. That being said, our next line of agenda is public comment. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. For the public to address the city council agenda, on agenda items and other city related business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda, to be respectful of everyone's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members on the order, uh, of the ordinance. And no one will actually be taking on any public comment issue. Your name is called, please proceed, uh, and stick your name. Please leave your comments for three minutes. No speaker may donate his time to those. Speaker comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comments for the purposes of campaigning or as a punishment. This is not a question and answer time. The council cannot engage in conversation in public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed with city staff and regular business hours. Our first, um, public comment is Amanda A, followed by Ryan Timoski. Amanda A.
Good evening, everyone. Special City Council meeting, another thing that, of this administration that gives me pause. Number one, changing up the public comment to me is a little confusing because it doesn't allow us to even give a comment about the ordinance, about financial distress city law. After, I mean, after it has been presented that we have to speak before. So I don't know if, again, that just seems to, it gives me a little pause in things to me. It just seems like there's a lot of trickery going on in this administration and it gives me pause. Also, it gives me pause about the meeting on Sunday, the emergency meeting, where I'm assuming the meeting was on Sunday, you all posted the agenda on a Friday after business hours. No one knew about it. And then to make a snarky comment saying, oh, we had public comment. And then to make a snarky comment saying, oh, we had public comment. Of, of course, public comment was a part of the agenda, but the public was not there to give comment. So again, that gives me pause to have an emergency meeting that the public did not know about. And then you go to social media to post about this meeting, but didn't use social media to make us aware of the meeting on Sunday. That kind of gives me pause. And I'm also, um, a little, um, not happy with the argument that started on the finance committee. Because the financial distress city law, according to the Illinois Municipal League, basically declares us quote-unquote bankrupt and the city has, the state has to step in and help us with the financials. But when you all are sitting in these meetings, I guess, I've been coming to every quarter and yet we talk about these deals. You unanimously pass them with no list, with no debate, and then here we are at the eleventh hour screaming for help. When, what's the purpose of having a, a finance committee if we're not discussing this? This, this financial distress city law didn't happen overnight. This has been years of mismanagement. And what do you all mean for every quarter if you're not going to address the elephant in the room? And then you decided to have gospel concerts and carnivals in the community. Those things cost us money. And if we don't have the money to have it, that's fine, but to scream bankrupt and then bring in a, a, um, a famous artist and pay them thousands of dollars, it doesn't make any sense. And whatever you're gonna say in the presentation that you're gonna have after this, it really doesn't mean anything because we should have never been to this point to be here. And it, it just really gives me pause. It's like, what are we paying the lobbyists for? What are we paying for all these things for? And then you all say, it's, we have all these donations, but we've never seen a letter of, of thank you for a donation. We've never seen a budget. We also are paying conspiracy to do an audit for us. So then what does that mean? Why would we pay a conspiracy to do a twenty-twenty-two audit and then we're gonna declare basically that we are in financial distress and we need the state to come in? It just doesn't make any sense here.
Well, next is Ryan Timlowski, followed by Ruby Dalgley.
Yeah, good to meet everybody. My name is Ryan. I'm at the Harvey Historical Society. I'm also a Harvey president. I, to, uh, thank Amanda and miss ask you for those comments. I definitely second all of those. As you can see, I'm still in my work clothes from working on properties because this, the whole past six years, unfortunately, under Mayor Clark's administration has, um, even though I did support Mr. Clark initially, uh, it's just been a lot of unanswered questions and another secret meeting after the secret meeting on Sunday, calling at five-thirty at a church instead of city hall. I mean, most people are still working. Why isn't it at seven o'clock? It's, it's all very strange. Um, I wanted to echo the concern about, um, why did we just spend thirty thousand dollars on the gospel concert if the city is quote-unquote broke, as Mayor Clark insists? What about all the fires that we're having? Why are there fires all the time? I've talked to the fire chief and other folks in the city. They never have any explanation. They just say, oh, uh, squatters. So squatters are just regularly setting fires in Harvey and we don't, we don't really have appropriate arson investigations going on. We don't have any reporting in the public about that. I mean, doesn't seem, uh, very, uh, you know, it seems pretty suspicious to me. What about all of our unsolved crimes? What about the activist, Edadai Brown, who's working with Mayor Clark, who bragged about calling ICE to Harvey and during the last city council meeting, because the mayor had canceled the one, uh, that we were supposed to have the most recently, Mayor Clark, instead of, um, just saying, hey, I support everybody, human rights are human rights, told all of us we should just stay quiet. That's the best way to deal with, uh, you know, ICE violence and human rights, uh, throughout the Chicago blind area. I mean, it doesn't cost any money to at least just say, hey, we think everybody should be treated fairly, but I guess we shouldn't be surprised, right? I've been arrested, my older one's been arrested, many of us have been arrested and our rights have been violated just for asking questions about where our money's going. So again, that's been six years of hiding money, arresting his opponents, hitting people who, um, say something under their breath at city council meeting, and now we have another secret meeting tonight to ask the state to take over our finances? So what, and as Amanda said, how are we even really supposed to know what to ask for public comment?
Thirty seconds.
Because we don't, nothing has been explained. It's just all, it's, you know, we, we, we really just don't get told anything in the city. They're talked down to and told that we're stupid and told that Mayor Clark's the best mayor ever, that we should all just sit down and shut up. And, um, but at the same time, we have all these department heads, including the mayor and other staff members, making six figures salaries from our tax money. So something's not adding up.
Your turn, sir.
Thank you. Next, Ruby Dalgley, followed by Kennedy Harris.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy that we do have a complement of people present so that we can get an understanding as to what actually is happening. And I think that my thoughts about the entire, uh, situation and with that of the concerned citizens here in Harvey is that we have come out to find out the actual status rather than criticizing what is going on. We got to see what can we do to rectify the situation? How did we get into this kind of situation? Was it overnight? No. And this is what I personally am waiting to hear from our mayor as to the actual status and why we are here in the beginning and what can we do about it? A lot of the things that have been mentioned previously, not at this particular meeting, really, it was about what is God's password? Why do we stand, uh, stand in the path of retroactive things when we need to be going forward? The current things are what need to be moved about. We are citizens here that are highly, paying high taxes, doing everything possible to move forward. And yet we are reacting in many instances in the manner of saying, it doesn't matter. But it does matter. It does matter. There are many of us that are sitting here that are toiling every day to just maintain a individual status. Not necessarily trying to go out and, and create a lot of hub things that are not necessary. We need to think harder and we need to work harder. And I love each and every one of you as citizens of Harvey and I've been in the community over fifty-six years. So I can see what the difference is. I can see what we, what is needed, what has been done and what we need to move forward with. And I thank each of you for your attendance. Lovely.
Next, Mayor, Kennedy Harris.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I was hoping that after the presentation today, that the following bullet points would be addressed, and if not, if there is something that will go out to the community to address, explain what exactly is going to occur if this indeed something that is passed by the city. Number one, the credit rating, not just the credit rating on Harvey, but also the villages that share zip code with Harvey. Will this affect capital projects or potential development projects moving forward? That's a question that someone needs to ask, some, a decision maker needs to ask. Another question, excuse me, long-term potential. We have seen when we live in a state where, um, the executive branch of the government has day-to-day effects in everyday life. How would this decision affect Harvey residents in our day-to-day life? Again, how does this affect city taxing bodies within the city? This will slow funding because when everything has to be approved through the state, that means that the state is going to look at everything. So will this, this will slow funding to the library and also the park district? As decision makers, the executive branch of the government in the city of Harvey, have you spoken with, have you sat down with your other taxing bodies in your community to make sure that this is the best decision possible? Also, have you looked at or had conversations with other financially distressed cities and how has it worked for them? What type of cuts did they have to make? What kind of decisions did they have to make? Was it a positive? Was it a negative? Was there anything they would have done differently? Was, was there any, or anything they would have asked of if they knew now that they are now in that financially distressed situation? As decision makers, have you done your research and asked these questions? Again, potential plan of the state in regards to Harvey. What is their vision if they intend to take over the finances of Harvey? Do they plan to cut services? Do they plan to divert funds to increase certain services?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, and then lastly, you must express to the homeowners that this will affect their, the value of their homes. This will lower the value of your home. How will this affect homeowners? How will this affect their taxes moving forward if they're potentially selling, want to sell their property? If there are seniors here that have their property indifferent to fund their, then the life things, time is done. Little bit.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, next on the agenda is five presentation of Harvey's financial situation. Five A and ordinance request and certification and designation under the financially distressed city law. Welcome. I think everyone, coming out, receiving, um, sort of regular views and matters regarding the city of Harvey, this is actually a very narrow meeting. Uh, the first thing that happens, of course, when, uh, when someone sees an agenda like this is to basically try to take over the narrative, narrative of making something that they want to make it into. As far as the council is concerned, council, we will be asking you for one specific thing at this particular moment in time. Uh, but before we do so, uh, we want to make sure that council and also, um, our public understand, uh, current financial conditions in Harvey. In order to do so, it's also important for us to understand how we got to where we are and why things are, why are we where they are at this particular point in time. So, first of all, the city of Harvey is and will continue to be committed to operating in full transparency. This is something that, uh, I fought for when I was an argument. Um, it's something that other, uh, members of our council have fought for and stands for, um, and all of our administration does. We're educating everyone on our current financial situation, of the best that we possibly can at this particular time. Of course, there are going to be tricky questions. We will have time for that. Um, and we will have, uh, time to address those and we will try to address those as best as we possibly can. But we, at the same time, we have action that we need to, in my opinion, uh, take care of today. Next slide. So we're gonna go into the history of the city, um, uh, next slide. Now, prior to, um, this administration, there were actually several administrations of the city of Harvey. We're gonna start in nineteen ninety-five with the Nicholas Graves', uh, situation and the administration. Nicholas Graves was the mayor of the city of Harvey from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and three. At that particular point in time, uh, after him, of course, followed the Alvin Mayor Victor Killough from two thousand and three to two thousand and nineteen, and then this administration, um, at two thousand and nineteen until present day. Next slide. Under the Killoughs, the Graves administration, the city struggled with, first of all, one, probably one of the biggest revenue generation drivers in the city of Harvey, which was, of course, Dixie Square Mall. But even though we had those challenges, and there were plenty of challenges under the Nicholas Graves administration, the Nicholas Graves administration was able to leave office in two thousand and three with approximately ten million dollars surplus. So when we went into the Killough administration, we came in with approximately ten million dollars surplus. Next slide. And then came the Killough administration. Next slide. And through that time, as you can see in the presentation, we're in two thousand and two thousand and nine. In two thousand and ten, there were bond offerings for the hotel. Um, for those of you who are not familiar with the hotel deal, there used to be a Holiday Inn on approximately one hundred and seventy-first and Austin. At that particular point in time, the Holiday Inn had closed, became another, um, hotel, and eventually that, uh, hotel closed its doors as well. Well, I guess in an attempt, because I really can't speak on, on that as far as what the actual purpose was. Uh, but during that time, there was a bond that was floating to try to rehabilitate that hotel. And that was in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, bond offerings. At that particular point in time, Harvey, under the previous administration, engaged in a scheme that is quoted to divert bond proceeds for improper purposes. These are not my statements. These are statements that were filed under complaint by the Securities and Exchange Commission. And as upon this scheme, Harvey made. And as upon this scheme, Harvey made representation and omission to investors about how those proceeds would be used. Well, of course, those proceeds were not used the way that they were supposed to be, and it was supposed to support the construction of the new hotel. The new hotel was never built. Those bonds were supposed to be repaid from the revenue streams from the hotel, but once again, the hotel was never built. Basically, the hotel would generate what is called a hotel motel sale and sales tax to help to pay off the bond that was taken out during this particular point in time, next slide. The city paid the developer, no, previous slide, please. The city paid the developer for the hotel. The hotel was never built. Now, that's important to know because the city took out a loan. The city paid the developer for the hotel, but the hotel was never built. So let's just say you decide to take out a loan for a vehicle, and you take out, let's say fifty thousand dollars for the vehicle. But then you decide that after you get the loan for the vehicle, you're not going to buy the vehicle. You're just wanting to keep the money and use the money for other things. Maybe you're shopping, buy some clothes, buy some other things that you may need, or needs to fill that you need, but you don't use that money for what it was intended for. That is what happened here. And based on the records, the hotel was never built, but in addition, the city diverted 1.7 million dollars that was raised through the bond offering and put that into its operation account. Okay, now, during that time, there were so many investigations from the Chicago Tribune, and the Chicago Tribune itself had been nominated for a Pulitzer Prize based on its investigative journalism into the city of Harvey, and two of its quotes were, "The money borrowed on the backs of taxpayers there from 2008 to 2010 largely went into a black hole of accountability with the hotel to this day left intact and Harvey residents on the hook to make loan payments of more than twenty million with no, little to no record of exactly where it went." Now, some of these say, well, how can it go from a million to twenty million? Those numbers don't necessarily job. Over the course of the entire borrowed money, and that hotel was never, the money disappeared. Second, Killall has since repeatedly refused to answer questions about the deal under hope citing his constitutional right to avoid giving answers that could be used to prosecute that, next slide. And so as a result, as you see on this slide, it says fine, but no repayment order. So the money disappeared. But we, as taxpayers in the city of Harvey, were still on the hook for that money. We still have to pay that money back. As a result, Harvey Mayor Killall at that time was fined $20,000. Millions of dollars disappeared, and he was fined $10,000 for the fraudulent bond offerings through the SEC investigation. And he was also ordered to no longer participate in municipal bond offerings for the rest of his life. But that thing would just have an impact on him. It had an impact on our city because our city at that particular point in time was ordered for a period of time to no longer be able to participate in bond offerings as well. Now, for those who don't understand the bond offering itself, it's basically a loan that a city takes out. The city takes out that loan to try to fund projects in the city. So where if you wanted to do some work to your home, or you wanted to, once again, get a new vehicle, you may not have the cash on hand, so you go ahead and you take out a loan to do something. Well, some of the things that are looked at when you decide to take out a loan, what's the first thing they look at when they want to figure out that they're going to give you the loan? The credit. They want to know, what have you done with money that you have been loaned previously? So they look at your credit. In this particular case, when this issue happened, took place in the city of Harvey, it drove whatever bond rate the city of Harvey may have had into the gutter. So even if they, for instance, the city wants to be able to get a loan, it probably would be so useless that would be like a payday loan. Okay, and the interest rate would be so high. If someone were to ask for loan money, but at this particular point in time, no, entirely off the table. So where other communities have the ability to get able to take care of projects in their community, and that's really what you see in the vast majority of cities around us. It's not that there, some of them do have a little bit of money, but the vast majority of them, they use that tool, their ability to be able to borrow, which allows them to be able to take care of the things that they need to take care of. Harvey does not have the ability to do that. Okay? So we are already, instead of a three-legged stool, we own a two-legged stool because one of those legs already are. The ability to be able to get those jobs. And the only thing that happened during this particular point in time was a $10,000 fine and no longer dissipated involving so much, one slide, next slide. While all of that was going on, the city of Harvey was still having to pay more and more, more and more lawsuits, more and more litigation, more and more workers compensation cases. And this is one where the city of Harvey had, Harvey had to pay 1.4 million dollars. I know some people in this room have heard of this particular issue, but Harvey had to pay 1.4 million dollars to settle suit because of the simple fact that the city had, along with some of the officers, unfortunately, including the mayor, framed a young man and sent him to jail. He was framed in such a way that the Illinois Supreme Court issued him, issued him a certificate of innocence. Not saying that he was found not guilty, but that he was innocent and he was framed. Now, those are the lawsuits that, of course, you know, are all the things that we have to deal with, are definitely unnecessary, and those are the things that cost our city more and more money. But that's what was happening is as this is going on, as we have 20 million dollars that we've basically lost in the hotel we did, then we turned around and we had to pay another 1.4 million on a lawsuit that should have never occurred, next slide. But once again, the Chicago Tribune, and I have to really give some credit to those journalists at that particular point in time because they wrote and wrote and wrote and wrote, and this is important when we go through where we're going to get because some people try to act as if, they never knew that any of this stuff was happening. Some folks are trying to act as if, I mean, maybe they were living under a watch at that time, and they absolutely no clue that this was happening in the city of Harvey. Those who live in the city of Harvey knew what was happening, and many of those who live in the Chicago that area knew that it was happening, but people turned a blind eye. Look at it. Harvey spending cash it doesn't have. We'll start off with sheriff's deputies auditors descend on Harvey City Hall. That's March 27, 2014. This is around the time, you remember this joke, when we were paying the mayor's son and all women, Joenski, paying the mayor's son $8,000 a year to do a Facebook page for the city. Harvey spending cash it doesn't have. March 21, 2014. March 2, 2014, FBI clams up on roll in Harvey mayoral election. Okay, now, we haven't touched too much into that, but basically what that refers to is the fact that $144,000, the FBI gave the administration, that candidate at the time, Eric Killall, $144,000 to support his campaign. Your federal government gave the candidate $144,000 to support his campaign for making, okay? February 18, 2014, excuse me, February 30, 2014, Harvey Mayor belatedly files three years of campaign reports. February 18, 2014, lawman seek answer from feds about Harvey. Big Herbert and Robin Kelly, Congressman Robin Kelly, both sent a letter to the Department of Justice asking for answers on how $144,000 of federal funds ended up in the campaign funds for Eric J. Killall. If you want the answers to that question, you need to ask them, but they definitely wrote a letter. Then the Chicago Tribune came out with, 2014, February 13, an editorial says Harvey was the city abused and ignored, and finally, February 12, sheriff seeks review to review the finances and police of suburbs. These are just a few of the things because everybody, the Chicago Tribune was writing something about the city of Harvey. And as the Chicago Tribune was writing it, Channel 9 was also recording it, because that's a Tribune company, they have to tell them about the rest of it. They were also recording it. So as these things were happening, people were watching our city go into the ditch. That's exactly what they were doing. Now, there are some, of course, who stood to benefit, and they'll be the first ones to jump up and say, there's a different type of story. But you can read it for yourself, next slide. At which point in time, myself, Shirley Joenski, Joseph Whittington, Lamont Brown, decided to pin a letter to the federal government, to the state government, the county government, and anyone else who would listen, to ask them to step into the city of Harvey and offer us some assistance. There was enough information that was already there. The Department of Justice had already done a report on the police department, saying that the police department did not keep records. So they couldn't find, they were supposed to investigate the department to find out what the use of force was, but they couldn't find out what the use of force was because the department did not keep the records to demonstrate what is use of force. The Cook County Sheriff had did a report on the city of Harvey and said that tow truck money was missing, and they couldn't account for where the money for the tow's went. That money was supposed to go into the coffins to help to pay down debt, but for some odd reason, it just disappeared and went somewhere else. And all the while, Shirley Joenski, Joseph Whittington, Lamont Brown, and myself kept pleading over and over again for help. We began to protest, even though some like to say we didn't show up in meetings 18 times, isn't that right, Shirley? We began to protest what was happening in the city, next slide. And so, of course, the editorial board of the Chicago Tribune wrote a, wrote a editorial about the city of Harvey, excuse me, and basically what was happening and what was trying to do, next slide. Once again, Lamont, Walberg, Kip Bryant, the editorial called on Melvin Roudner at the time to send the Department of Revenue agent to Harvey to encourage the state police to investigate. Was that done? No. Editorial suggested that the element ordered a general to review Harvey's finances. Was that done? None. Actually, if I'm correct, Shirley Joenski, we tried to pass a, an ordinance to allow Tom Dart to be the Inspector General, head that, Attorney General at that particular point in time, to take a look at the finances. And even though Tom Dart tried and wanted to get involved, that particular ordinance was vetoed by Eric Killall. Next slide. The victims, again, of the residents of Harvey and our line functional government, to serve them, let it sink in. All the elected officials who care deeply about their city are pleading for help in whatever way, under whatever legal authority you may have, to intervene into the city of Harvey. Ignoring them further victimizes the residents of this troubled city and the all the brave enough to speak out, Christopher Florence, Whittington, Shirley Joenski. Next slide, please. So once again, state turns light eye to the problems in Harvey. Next slide. And while that was going on, we had additional headlines. Strip club gay mayor of Illinois for years to allow prostitution to the venue, fed second. And these are all things that had to be defended in the city of Harvey. This brings, for those who think that maybe I'm not the best mayor in the world, okay? Imagine, oh, let's go back to the days of, I don't know, it's all sorts of that, Marion Berry, when that first hit the news, and it was said that Marion Berry was smoking crack out of his gullet, how that impacted Washington DC. Or Mayor Ford in Canada, I think he was the mayor, Toronto, I think he was, or Vancouver, one of them. And when your mayor and leadership is made to look that way, it diminishes the credibility, faith, and belief in the institution in which you serve. It diminishes the faith, credibility, and belief in those people because in general, this does not happen. But according to this report, former Harvey L. American Killall's brother was convicted in the scheme which occurred when he was in office. Federal prosecutor says Killall has not been charged. Well, you're not even going to go in there, I'm pretty sure somebody will run to his defense as soon as they possibly can. We'll move on to the next slide. And it just continued on and on, next slide. Continued on and on, cousin of former Harry Harvey Mayor Killall, pleads guilty and Brian recharged. So while we have no credit, because our credit is going down to the dirt, then the overall perception of the city is that the city is just absolutely critical. That's the way that it goes. And I can guarantee you, some of y'all would need to loan your cousin, who don't do whatever he or she is supposed to do, $5 to go do something. Imagine someone coming to you and saying to you that they want to borrow 50 million, 200 million, and this is the behavior that has been engaging. Next slide, please. In addition to that, the city of Harvey purchased water from the city of Chicago and sold it to five municipalities, Vicksburg, Hazel Press, Hazel Press, Homewood, and Holston. We used to have plenty more customers. We don't have it anymore now, but they sold water. And of course, they sold water to, if you're a resident of Harvey, they sold it to us. And actually, in fact, we paid the highest bill for all of those women's families, even though we were the ones even though we were the ones selling the water. Can you imagine, can you imagine being a farmer and having a milking cow and actually charging yourself more for milking? That's what was happening in the city of Harvey. And the city billed those downstream communities for water, and they collected that revenue and then failed to pay it to the city of Chicago. That's two. Let's go back. First was the hotel motel payment. Money was taken, money disappeared, money that we have to pay back. Money was used for operations and other things of which they're lucky for. City billed the downstream municipalities for their water, but never paid that money to the city of Chicago. Next slide. Now, some of y'all are gonna say, no, that can't be true. Well, Harvey illegally diverted water and cash owed to Chicago, millions missing. Judge rules, not clerk rules, judge rules. We went to court, the city of Harvey went to court, and some of the people in this room also went as well, concerned citizens of the city of Harvey. And during that time, it was established that the city of Harvey under the previous administration had diverted water and cash that was owed to Chicago, and the money was disappeared. So, even though the money disappeared, we never paid, as a city, the city of Chicago, yet you still owe that money to the city of Chicago. The city of Harvey does. Next slide. So then judge ordered Harvey to pay Chicago 26 million in unpaid water bills. So we got it so far, we got 20, 20 million in a, in a bond deal, we got another 26 million. Okay, my mathematicians out there, I'm pretty sure y'all figured that out real quick, that's 46 million dollars already, that we have been on the hook for, that we didn't have the money for, but the money disappeared. Next slide. The judge in that particular case, Captain Patrick said, "The city's leaders failed to grasp the severity of their years of illegal conduct." Illegal conduct. So we got it. Borrowing money missing for hotels. Nobody ever being charged, nobody going to jail. We got it. Years of illegal conduct, where millions of dollars were missing, and 26 million was misspent. No charges. But we had to, what did we get as a result? What was our door prize? Our door prize was a water receiver. And the water receiver was appointed to the city of Harvey to oversee the water money. And the water receiver ended up charging the city of Harvey, how much money was it? Four hours? Four hours? Four hundred thousand, exactly four hundred thousand, right? Four million dollars. So in addition to the 26 million, the 20 million, the receiver hits us up for another four. And that water receiver was appointed by the courts. So we couldn't get out of that net. In 2015, Mayor Manuel, next slide, announced a settlement with the city of Chicago. So this is, this is all great. The city of Harvey has entered into a settlement with the city of Harvey to collect the unpaid water bills on behalf of Chicago taxpayers. Action ensues, more than 30 million will be recruited from all four suburban municipalities who owe the power of taxpayers. That was in 2015. Was it all paid? No. And we found ourselves, rowdy again, Shirley Jewerstie, back in 2010. And each and every time that we're in court, we not only have to deal with the publicity of it all, we also have to pay attorneys to represent the city in these particular cases. Next slide, please. So, we asked for oversight. Shirley Jewerstie, Joe Whittington, sitting right here, myself, we asked for oversight. That was vetoed. Next, uh, Lawson. And then came from a guy said, fire pension Lawson. Now, before I make my statements here, I want to make sure that everybody in the room understands that our police department, our fire department, especially the Harvey Fire Department, the Harvey's best, I don't know better than fire department, I got an honor to say. And, uh, as far as the police department, even though it's had some challenges, the police department has been turned around and made some significant changes in the way it operates and in, in, in solving of cases in the city of Harvey. So they are to be committed, but this is not them, this is the fire pension, okay? And before we get into that, I also got on Fox News, a national program, and, and got on there and talked to the reporter at the time and said to the reporter that the pensions need to be paid. It's important, those pensions were a part of the promise that we made to the people who served as our first responders. And so it was important that we paid those pensions. But how they get paid is a total disagreement. So until 2010, the fire pension board filed a lawsuit alleging that since 2005, the city failed to make contributions to its fund. Actually, wasn't it 10 years ago, was it? It was two, it was ten, it was 10 years. That the city of Harvey had not paid the pension, um, obligations to both fire and to police. And in 2015, the trial court held that the city was liable for more than $15 million in damage. Now, a lot of things happened at that particular point in time, and actually, you know, in my opinion, we could have worked to settle that amongst ourselves, but it didn't work that way. So, that's when the Chicago Tribune stepped in again, but those Chicago Tribune, you can go back and find the quotes. Oh, Harvey has set up a collision course, oh, a collision course over many years where the beneficiaries of the firefighter's pension fund are being paid substantially extra money that the firefighters have themselves contributed to the pension fund. And the money the pension fund earns from investments, the court wrote, because we went into court again. In essence, Harvey is robbing Peter to pay court. But what happens when Peter retires? Money misses, money is missing. And instead of them being, instead of the pension holders at the time being paid from the investments, what do you call that thing? It was a pyramid scheme, that's what it was. He familiar with a pyramid scheme? And it basically took the money from what was coming in to pay off the people who were owed. Okay? And the people who were forced to spend the money that were coming in would never, ever get the opportunity to recruit the return on their investment. But people are convicted of pyramid schemes, usually what happens? What's it burning, they go? What happens? People get charged. People go to jail. But in the case of the city of Harvey, the $15 million wasn't paid. And nothing happens. Next slide, please. So in 2018, the city was into a settlement agreement with the pension fund. And in 2016, the state passed a law basically allowing the state comptroller to seize the money that the municipality owed to the pension, in extreme cases of pension mismatch. Well, this is one of those cases. So the pension, fire pension fund, the fire pension fund was $67.6 million underfunded with a 12% funded ratio. And after racking up, as it says, an unfunded liability of $36.7 million at a fund rate of 29%, the police pension sued also. So we were sued by police and fire. And the courts, no one happened, the courts were supposed to pay them. They weren't paying, they were supposed to be paid. The court said they were supposed to be paid, and at least they were today. And so the police and the fire pension decided that they were going to take action. The seizure of state funding for pensions has resulted in significant layoffs of critical services. Now, this was back in 2018. Next slide. So let me quit. This is not the fault of any city employee, it's not the fault of any employee, and specifically our fire and police. As a mayor, I could not be prouder of our first responders, I could not be prouder of our chiefs. Couldn't be prouder. They have done phenomenal jobs keeping this thing together. I definitely see, and everybody makes those, they follow us. Has done a fantastic job, and it's not their fault, it's not the fault of the residents of Harvey either. You've seen cuts in service in 2000, 2018, we saw half the fire department was cut, you remember that, guys? Half the police department was cut in 2018 because of that. And we've seen cuts in crucial services, at one point in time, we could not even get garbage service. And the city of Harvey was on television because we weren't paying the garbage bill. But what this does is this drives us into a situation where the city, because of all the me-ho, will, um, impact us. So, next slide. So by the end of the Kellogg administration, the city of Harvey went from a $10 million surplus to $164 million in debt. And nobody in that administration was charged with crime. My, um, we only have a little bit more to go, but my, uh, city administrator said, we probably need to take a break here. So it depends on the council. If the council wants to do so, or would you like the people? Yeah, motion by the first, or the second, by the third, all in favor of seeing if I'm gonna say hi. Go suppose. Here and there, we'll take a break for five minutes. Oh, we did have. The charge that they were returned at 6:55.
Okay, so, a lot of weddings, etc., but, you know, it's all stuff that, um, he was not married.
Yeah.
But it's not, I think it's lying, like, actually, most of this is factual.
I mean, it's very well, I mean, obviously, you know, and putting a lot of resources on these sides, so, like, yeah, it's like.
Right. And that's exactly. And that's been what I'm glad to do, so, you know, for many years under Eric Kellogg. So, you know, my theory is that he knows, he knows, um, he knows everything. Now, Clark believes in, um, in before his first term, it's been, you know, he and, um, Oh, right, right, yeah, because I don't, I don't think they're gonna have anybody else speak to him. No, I think he just meant, like, if you didn't want it up there for the, for the public comment stuff.
I think I'll leave it.
You'll leave it then?
Alright. Thank you, yes, yes, please, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, at least with public comments, I guess, very. But anyway, yeah, so, um, so it's, there's just so, oh, my God.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
But they're so difficult, like, I've, I've done my best, like, um, as citizen journalists, person, to try to get information about, and he's doing everything. And then the, um, he was, so, so he got a, you know, a, 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 for, for council, and you saw Kerry.
Uh, to the next slide please. So, we saw where we left off in the previous administration. And of course, we come and find ourselves in the Clark administration, current administration. The current administration inherited one hundred and sixty-four million dollars in debt obligations. And we went through all of our course through this presentation, and there were some things that we actually didn't address. Much, uh, inherited a hundred and sixty-four million dollars in debt obligations. Back to that pension issue with police and fire. Uh, we inherited a loss of thirty-five percent of state revenue. That's now being diverted to, or I like to say, garbage, um, to fund, of course, the pensions. Of course, we inherited, inherited gross lack of financial and personnel records. And for those who can go back to May of twenty nineteen, you may recall when Ben Bradley came to the city of Harvey and took a look in the city and looked at all of the boxes that was thrown all over the place and the records that were all over the place. I'm also going to, uh, speaking on that issue, um, commend the clerk's office for doing everything that they did, along with, of course, the rest of the team to try to get those documents, uh, in order. Um, because it was, it was a seismic, uh, piece of work and labor that needed to be done in order to do so. Uh, of course, we inherited a lack of annual audits. And of course, because we didn't have the audits, we didn't have the paperwork either to complete some of those audits. And finally, we inherited the city's reputation for and the public perception of corruption and mismanagement. And that's where we started. Uh, next slide. So where do we go from here? Next slide. Well, where does the city get its property, well, its revenue from? First, property taxes. In general, cities will get their revenue, uh, a lion's share of their revenue from the property taxes. In the case of the city of Harvey, the city of Harvey collects approximately fifty-two percent of its property taxes. On average, we are losing because of the failure to pay property taxes somewhere to twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-five to twenty-seven million dollars a year that we're not collecting in property taxes. And specifically from a commercial property tax, uh, property tax standpoint, it's about twelve million dollars. I'm not gonna go into twelve million, twenty seventeen thousand five hundred and seventeen, about twelve million dollars. Another way that the city gets revenue, and other cities do as well, is through sales taxes. But the majority of the businesses, ninety, at least ninety percent of the businesses in the city of Harvey are cash-based businesses. Now, there's nothing wrong with having a cash-based business at all, but I'll look me out to if some of those cash-based businesses do not engage in the proper reporting of the cash that they receive as revenue for their businesses. And I'll give you an example. There is a business that used to be in the city of Harvey by the name of Sugar Babies. And Sugar Baby used to put down on the reporting to the state that for the whole day, for those who were not familiar with Sugar Babies, Sugar Baby was a nightclub bar nightclub. Uh, it may also call itself a grill at that particular point in time. But it put on its recording to the state of Illinois that its gross income was twenty-five thousand dollars for the year. Some people laughing already, but you know it's a year. Twenty-five thousand dollars. But when we look at that and looked at their liquor sales alone, the liquor sales, they had sold approximately four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars worth of liquor. But it wasn't reported. Most of that stuff, cash. And it was only because the, uh, the liquor commissioner and the team who worked with the liquor commissioner was able to under uncover that, that we were able to bring that to the attention of the state. And so, many of our businesses, that are cash-based businesses, bring in the revenue, but they don't report it. So we don't get the full amount of sales taxes. We don't get, and then when it comes to state income taxes, that's another way that the city will get its revenue. State motor fuel, fuel taxes. Those things help to fix roads and sidewalks and take care of lights and things of that nature. That's where a city gets its revenue from. Other taxes, real estate taxes, transfer taxes, video gaming taxes, terminal push taxes, things of that nature, grants, license and permit charges, and of course miscellaneous, um, revenue that we get from sale towers, rentals, uh, payable franchise agreements and things of that nature. That's basically how a city gets its revenue. Next slide. From the property tax standpoint, we file a levy every December. A levy is filed with the county, telling the county how much money we need. This is what cities normally do. They include the city, the school districts, township, department districts, library, community colleges, NWRB, forest preserves, things of that nature. If you ever take a look at your tax bill, you will see that the city of Harvey is only one line on your entire tax bill of how much you tax. And there's limits on how much a local government impacts. So, this, this, this goes back to our understanding of our property taxes. And the city of Harvey cannot just arbitrarily decide that they're going to go up just any amount of money that the city would like to go up on your taxes. New municipalities don't have the ability to be able to do that. Now, county concession does some things. They add together. The levy amounts comes by these means, eventually it comes into value of properties, and they put all that together, and I'm just gonna say, cause you know, there's, there's some concerns as far as that's concerned. Um, but they come up with the amount of what they believe the property is worth, and based on that, how your property should be taxed. And property taxes generally are basically based on the market value of the property that you own. Okay, and people would, people would express, I'm sorry, laughing at this one. People with expensive properties pay more, and less expensive properties pay less. I probably have to disagree with that, but sometimes, you know, that's the way that it's supposed to work. Uh, next slide. But the largest amount that we get and the largest amount that most municipalities receive, uh, in revenue is from property taxes. So, here are our challenges. One, compared to surrounding communities, Harvey has pure commercial, retail, and industrial properties to contribute to our tax pay. As a result, the larger tax burden falls on who? The Harvey residents. And the Harvey residents have for decades, I'm gonna repeat, for decades, been floating this boat in the city of Harvey to make sure that we could even exist. So to all of the residents in the city that are homeowners and pay those taxes, we thank you very much for doing so. But because of the previous administration, the city of Harvey's residents are taxed at one of the top three highest rates of all municipalities in the country. So we're taxed high. Fifty-two percent, as I said, of the city's residents and, of course, commercial properties do not pay your property taxes, so we lose that revenue, and many of the city's businesses, of course, don't pay. As of twenty twenty-one, those businesses, those commercial properties owe them, and I've said it so much, it almost became a song. Twelve million two hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars in unpaid taxes. That is one year. Some of those businesses have not paid taxes for twenty years. And if we go back, and I'm not gonna, uh, ask the person operating the slides to do so, but the very first thing that we do is the vast majority of the revenue that a municipality gets is from property taxes. And this is what we have. Next slide please. Um, the Cook County reassessed, of course, that's what I said, um, property values. And many residents, because of the property taxes, cannot afford their homes. They're taxed out of their homes. Next, next, uh, slide please. So, what did we do? We pledged, along with this body before you, to freeze residential property taxes, even though we were facing a one hundred and fifty million dollar deficit. Now, there were some people who asked the question of, why would you do that? Why would you freeze increasing property taxes when you know that you already have a hundred and fifty million dollars in the home? I'll tell you why. First of all, there's just a downright order of fairness. And the people in the city of Harvey have paid so much from a property tax standpoint that it's absolutely ridiculous. These are, some, some are poor, some are working poor people who have just enough month at the end of the month to try to be able to make it every single day. And when we go as a government and we decide that we're going to increase those taxes even more, what happens? We get what's called diminishing returns. People get to the point where they say, you know what? The taxes are just too high. I give up. I'm not doing it anymore. A lot of them have already done that and walked away from their homes. And when you see a lot of these abandoned properties in the city of Harvey, they weren't always that way. But some of them could not afford to stay in the homes in which they lived because the taxes were too high. And so what we wanted to do was want to show the people, the residents in the city of Harvey, that we appreciate them, that we recognize you, that we see you. Because the same things that you go through, we go through as well, as homeowners in the city. We seek you. And to increase your taxes, to me, would be just as irresponsible as some claiming to be irresponsible because we owe a hundred and fifty million. We would not collect any more money because we increased the taxes. So the taxes, if we increased the taxes, that one fifty wasn't gonna go down because fewer people were gonna pay. Now, we're only one of fifteen taxing minds that's on your tax bill. So when you go look at your tax bill the next time, when, whenever they, their, their, their lips are gonna make their way into the mailboxes. And when they do, and you take a look at your tax bill, just remember, the city of Harvey did not increase its taxes. So if your tax bill has increased, then you need to ask yourself, who was it of those fifteen districts that increased the tax bills to make you pay more? Cause it wasn't the city of Harvey. And even though we knew that for some, you know, uh, considered it would be put us in a bad way, we, we just couldn't do it. And I'm, I'm proud of what we did. I'm proud of the council members that agreed with it. Um, and we decided to freeze those. Next slide. But the second they saw the taxes, should've been out by August, August first. But they have not sent out the tax bill yet. Has anybody, at least not to me, has anybody anywhere got their Cook County property tax bill yet? Okay. I just want to make sure, maybe I was missing mine. Okay. But as a result, as a result, you have to look at it this way. With all the things that we've talked about so far, as far as money is concerned, the one thing you need to realize is the city of Harvey does not have a surplus. Remember, I said a hundred and sixty-five million dollars worth of debt. The city of Harvey does not have a cushion. The city of Harvey does not have a soft place to land. When we don't get those tax dollars, that is all the money that we would've had. And as a result, because the bills have not gone out, people have not paid. And because people have not paid, the city has not received the money that it was supposed to receive in September. So, to put it in plain English, y'all, we've been riding on E for quite some time. And you know how you get when you're riding on E and you're trying to figure out, okay, am I finally on fumes? Or when is the car going to stop? Well, the city relies on those revenues operating, and we continue to have those expenses, even though there's no more money coming in. Next slide. So, even if we received, uh, those taxes, we still remain unable to meet our operational expenses, cause everybody's already been spared. Okay, and the amount that's lost by the, the defaulting property taxpayers, that twenty-five to twenty-seven million, puts us in a hole so deep that we can't even meet our other obligations. Okay, and so we've been without funding since September. And it's exacerbated everything we've had to do. Because all those things that we were talking about from the previous administration, we need to talk about all the litigation that we have to deal with. All of the judgments that we have to pay, all of the arbitrations awards that we have to, um, pay. We didn't, we haven't discussed stuff. All of the business and everything that we must take care of. We're not getting any of those dollars, and we're not able to pay our vendors, and we're not able to take care of our operational expenses. Um, next slide. So, back to the pension board and that lawsuit. We need to explain how that impacts us. I'm used to standing up, but I'm gonna try to stay seated. I'm gonna kind of, you can read what it says here, but I wanna try to kind of explain it to you. So, the city of Harvey gets a grant, three quarters of a million dollars. Okay, and it's true to state. Because the city of Harvey gets a grant for a million dollars, which is a great thing, because we need money. I think most people would, you know, agree that we need money, we need to fix infrastructure. And so say for instance, the city of Harvey got a million dollar grant. One of the first things that happens with that million dollar grant is the controller, the state controller, because of the pension lawsuit, takes thirty-five percent of that million dollars. Follow me? So they take three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that million dollars. Now, we already have established that we don't have the operational expenses, that we don't get the, the, the property taxes and the sales taxes and the state income taxes, and all those other things that we're supposed to get. So when we get a million dollar grant and then the state takes the three hundred and fifty thousand, we are now in violation of that grant. Am I right, Howard? We are now in violation of that grant. So in order for us to get out of that being in violation, we have to come up with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have to find it wherever we have to pay. Where, where are we gonna find it? Remember we talked about Rob and Peter the PayPal? We have to Rob Peter the PayPal to try to figure out how to come up with the money to pay that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That three hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes from where? Our operational expenses. Which is an operational expense, which is a short way of saying payroll, to pay the employees in the city of Harvey. And if we don't come up with that three hundred and fifty thousand, then what? We can't use the grant. We still owe the three hundred and fifty thousand, and right now, we have, what is it, Attorney General's Office coming after us for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for fifty thousand dollar grant that we got from police. We got a grant from police. The controller took thirty-five cents, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And then the Attorney General's Office is coming after us for the seventeen five. So now we have to defend ourselves. So not only do we have to pay, we have to defend ourselves, we have to pay attorneys to defend us. Because we actually already properly used that seventeen five for the purposes of the grant. It's just a vicious cycle over and over again. And this is what happens. And every time we take one step forward, we go two steps back. Every single time. Somebody is out there saying three steps back. Next slide. So, because of that, in addition to taking the thirty-five percent of state funds, of MFT funds, and taking district funds, and taking every type of funding that we're taking out, funds from EPA. For those who are familiar with, um, what's it called, LED service lines? They don't have service lines in the city of Harvey. The city of Harvey was established in eighteen ninety-one. So they don't have service lines in the city of Harvey. And we were trying to get money for those lines, the micro-runs. And what the controller do? Took the money. Not only did the controller take the money on behalf of the pensions, and like I said, this, this is the project. But, then the EPA wrote us a letter saying that they weren't going to give us any more grant funds because our money is taken by the state controller. So that means while Linnwood, Hall, and Flossmore, Natchitoches, University Park, Olympic Field, that's why, uh, Holden Park, Tilly Park, and Cozen, and everybody else gets to drink their free water, we get to get stuck with their water. Because we can't get the money, because our money is being taken by the controller due to something that happened many years ago. Many years ago, under another administration. And we have to continually try to figure out a way to find our way. Next, next slide. Same thing with the five inch litigation. I'm not going to belabor this. Same thing with the five inch litigation. Same thing happened. Next slide please. And we're gonna, I think I've made my point. Maybe I haven't, but I think I have. Because as far as sales tax, we have the same issue. This money continues to be taken. Next slide. State income tax, same thing. Next slide. Our motor fuel tax. Some people ask, why don't we fix the streets? Why don't we take care of those things? What about potholes and things of that nature? That money is being taken through the five inch of these pensions. And I just have to just also note, because I've been here in the city for so long, and I'm looking at some of our wonderful residents, and some of y'all are even by the city's hip. That helps to fund this motor fuel tax. So we can repair those. Next, uh, slide. The Rivers Casino revenue. We would get about, what is it, one point two million from, uh, Rivers, one point four? One point four million from Rivers Casino? But since Winfrey gets here now, there's been legislation put in place so that we don't get the one point four anymore. That instead of receiving the money from Rivers Casino, we won't get that money anymore. And instead, and this isn't only affect the city of Harvey, it affects a lot of the other Southland communities. The city of Harvey would only receive approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. So we go through getting one point four at Rivers, eight hundred thousand from Winfrey. They just, uh, the money. And that's some stuff that happens down in state. So if you got problems with that, you gotta talk to those people. Next, uh, more slide. Same thing with grants. And I've already talked to you about the grants. Next slide. Other revenue sources. Same thing. So, we know the money isn't there. We know that money disappeared. We know that people weren't charged. We know that money wasn't paid. We know that there's been litigation. When all these things have happened, but what does the city of Harvey need? Well, the city of Harvey needs roughly fifty-one million annually to pay its operational needs. Fifty-one million. And there's not one person, cause I see some employees in the audience. There's not one person who works for the city of Harvey that makes the same or more than what their counterpart would make in the village in the city of Harvey. Our employees are understaffed, they're underpaid. Okay, and we need approximately fifty-one million annually to pay my operations needs. We receive about thirty million, so we shy once again. Too much trouble to get the money. And now, in addition to receiving approximately thirty million per year, we're also, would you go to the next slide please? We also, um, are receiving thirty-five percent less because of those fire and, and police pensions. Now, I gotta say it again because someone's going to misconstrue what I'm saying, so I wanna make sure that it's clear, cause I've said it before. This is not a reflection of my police department, it's not a reflection on our fire department. And when I called the pyramid scheme, it was a pyramid scheme that the previous administration was involved in. To basically use that money to have the front payment from people who were actually paying the active members. So I wanna make sure that we understand that. Because once again, sometimes, you know, I do as well, getting my feelings every now and then. And, uh, and as they say, you feel some type of way. I don't want any of, our first response is feeling that way at all because of the work they did. But because we only collect about thirty million dollars, and then thirty-five percent of that is gone, we tried to keep this city operating for the past six years. And we tried every creative way that we could to try to make sure that this city had streets like square sidewalks, that we had police and fire protection, that we had garbage picked up, refuse picked up every week, and that we weren't on the news. We worked opportunities off to try to do so. That's exactly what we did. We didn't increase property taxes because we knew that our residents could not afford it. And we didn't have the ability qualified for another bond to pay for any of these expenses the way a normal municipality would be. To next slide. So of course, we have additional challenges. Nobody sees their citizen's entire financial situation. The Illinois law has no provision for municipal bankruptcy. Cause there's some who say, well, why don't you just do it Detroit way? You know, Detroit's on the menu, so why don't you do what they did? There is no, um, provision for what's called women's families to engage in bankruptcy. And while we want to pay all of our bills, there is no mechanism for municipality to consolidate its debt. It is like chapter thirteen or something like that. There's no ability for us to do that. So we basically just paid it to go, and we have officially run out. Next slide. When the city took the staff employees or restructured departments, the unions have challenged our activists at every moment. And the arbitrators who were either aware, unaware of what we're going through, or maybe they just didn't believe our financial challenges, have issued additional awards. So this is how this works. We'll have a, we'll get an arbitration award from the arbitrator. We can't pay the arbitration award. So then the unions will go file another unfair labor practice and go into arbitration to try us to get, get us to pay the to try us to get us to pay the thing that we can't pay. Okay? And then when we can't pay it, and we can demonstrate that we can't pay it, then the arbitrator issues another award for us not paying the award that we were supposed to pay. And now we gotta try to pay that award in addition to the award we were supposed to pay. And they want a hundred percent? And they want a fifty six percent as well? Even though we like to regularly pay and we can do so. And you know what the arbitrator said? Well, we should be able to pay these things because the other municipalities around us can pay them. That, that's like you being a doctor. And unfortunately, our school teachers don't make enough money. And me being a school teacher. And the expectation is, I'm supposed to pay, the same with my own taxes, they keep paying. Because we live in the same neighborhood. No, doesn't make any sense. But the way the arbitrators look at it, it does. And it continues to put the city of Harvey in a deeper hole. Next, next slide. Same thing with these lawsuits and our workers' compensation cases. We've tied cases, we've won, and we've settled cases. But we have to pay off these judgments. Approximately ninety percent, from what I recall, approximately ninety percent of those cases are cases from the previous administration. We got cases going back as far as two thousand seven. Two thousand seven. That one never either settled, negotiated, or whatever. But the judges and arbitrators look at the same case and they don't consider that Harvey cannot immediately pay off its expenses. And it seems to me, honestly, at least it's my understanding, that they don't care. And so we've tried to negotiate something to know their. We've tried to give the opportunity to pay off our judgments a little bit longer over time to know their. Of course, everybody wants their money. I love telling the, what I call the sergeant story. Okay? I, I, I love your sergeants. I know, I love you, but I gotta, I gotta come for you for a second. Because we wanted to get new cars for the city. Because when I came into the city, you could see through the floorboard of each and every, uh, police vehicle. It was like using a flip stone. And you would pedal with your feet to try to get the pad on. And we were trying to get new cars, but we also had to pay back pay to our sergeants. And the sergeants were supposed to get it. But the question was asked about us getting the vehicles or paying them immediately. And they wanted their money. Even though the cars would have put them in a better position to be able to do the jobs if they were being paid to do. Now, I'm not all, I'm not all, as they say, hit on somebody because they wanna get the cheese. But at the same time, if we're doing this together, you have totally different respect. Next. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that was one. Yeah, that's, that's the last one. If we can go pedal to that. Get some cake for that. Well, oh, yeah. There we go. Yeah, we also tried to file another suspension to allow us to pay off our judgments over time over a longer period of time. But that failed because of pushback from the trial lawyer lawlessness. Okay? So everybody's protecting their interest. Everybody's taking care of themselves. And while they're taking care of themselves, the city of Harvey continues to go down. And that's one of the main parts of this story. It's not just about what happened in previous administration. It's about a lot of people sat and watched those things happen, and you absolutely nothing. People who we relied on to do something. And it did nothing. Next slide. So we had several successes, of course. We have finally sealed the deal on any litigation over the bond default. We got ourselves out of the Securities and Exchange Commission's, uh, investigation. Um, and that complaint was dismissed. Uh, we took care of that. Next slide. We have, of course, brought in, of course, some economic development, uh, most, uh, recently, Harvey lost, uh, which has been extremely successful. And it's a twenty million dollar investment, uh, by Pivotal. Next slide. We're also overhead, we're over, um, calling metric and pace. They have received money on behalf of the city of Harvey. So for those who think that for some reason, that when we, you see these, these initiatives taking place, and you see the construction or whatever it is, you don't have to worry, the money goes, you don't wanna worry, you don't have to worry, the money don't come past my desk. The money don't even, I don't even see what it looks like. I don't get to sniff it. That money goes straight from wherever the grant is, straight to the people doing the work. But that kinda happens when you have a hotel deal, where you're supposed to build a hotel, and all the money is fees. Now, they don't, it doesn't make a difference that you have a new administration, and that you have new people working in that administration, and that your, uh, mayor is a attorney. They don't care. They're making sure that bottom line is, I don't touch money either. So I don't have to wear that on intel for those who would like to see me. Because it's simple fact is, the money goes straight from the grant straight to the, the people performing the work. And we have to provide documentation on all of it. Ain't there right there? Little switch? Next, uh, slide, please. So of course, we know that the city of Harvey is a desirable location. We have all these businesses, we have good locations, we have all the rails, we have all of the expressways, we have all of those things. But there are some other things that are hindering us. We can't, we can't seize property. So when you see some of the property that needs to be redeveloped, we can't seize that property because we don't have the money to seize it. Somebody the other day talking about the fact that I loaned the city of Harvey twenty five thousand dollars of my own personal money. We don't have the money to actually seize those properties. So when you have an abandoned property, say for instance, on your block, okay? As, as high you as well. And you have that abandoned property on your block. It may be owned by a private party, not owned by the city. The city could attempt to try to seize that property, take over that property, and try to put that property back on the tax records. But in order for us to be able to seize the property, we have to have the finances to be able to do something. To be able to court, to be able to pay fees, to be able to do everything that needs to be done, to be able to pay the mortgage. If the property needs to be torn down, we have to have the money to order to tear it down. And we don't have the finances to do something. As a mayor, if we had the resources to tear down all of the properties that needed to be torn down, we would tear them down. If we had the resources to fix all the streets the way they needed to be fixed, we would fix them. The reason why it's not done is because we don't have the revenue to be able to do something. And that's what happens. You guys are. I understand, yeah. You know, we, you know, while we're in church, we gonna pray, it's gotta be a prayer. Our brother Tyron back to us. Man, come on now. Mm-hmm. Thank you. It was great. Y'all saw how bad he let his brother was. But he was still talking all the time. He was just a hostile. So we don't have the resources to be able to do something. If we had the resources to be able to do something, you don't have to believe me, but I'm gonna tell you. Those things would be done. Absolutely. So much so, that yes, I did loan the city twenty five thousand dollars of my own money. Money that I earned to tear down a house here in the city. And I did that because the city of Harvey did not have the money to be able to do something. We don't have, just unfortunately, somebody else will say, I ain't no problem with it. We don't have what all the other municipalities have. And that's what we're trying to get to, that's what we need to get to. And, um, and hopefully, we can get to next slide. Um, yeah, we've had, as you know, a county has assisted with infrastructure needs. Next slide. We don't have a, a, a loss of bankruptcy. Next slide. And so currently, House Bill four zero two four. Everyone, pay attention here. For those who have drafted, drifted off a little bit, pay attention. House Bill four zero two four is current opinion in the veto section, which would provide thirty million dollars in relief to the city of Harvey to continue operating under other, uh, until other revenue sources kick in. Because we still got a lot of work to do. We've also drafted legislation that prohibits the comptroller from being able to seize the restricted funds. Because remember, once again, I went on Fox News and I said, Fox Business, and I said that the pensions should be paid. I still believe that. But I don't believe that the restricted funds should be used in order to pay. Because to me, that's just a, 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 a misappropriation of the intent of what those funds were supposed to be. So we've also drafted that legislation, um, to be able to do something. And that brings us to where we are now. The financially distressed city law. So there's gonna be, oh, and first of all, before we get into this, but this, we're in the wrap-up stage now. Before we can get there, I wanna thank everybody who took the time and listened and taken this journey with us. Um, it's important that we do so because in a city such as the city of Harvey, some people have been in there here for their entire lives. And some just moved here a year, two years ago and don't understand quite where we were, where we came from, and what we're experiencing now. So I appreciate you taking, uh, that journey, uh, uh, to this point. Next slide. Financially distressed city law. We're just asking for one thing. For the council to take action under the financially distressed city law. The purpose of the law is to provide secure financial basis for the continued operation of a financially distressed city, which is what I'm hoping at this particular point in time, the city of Harvey will be declaring. But we have to do this in steps. And this is where the experts are gonna come out. But they can do all their talking head stuff later. Counsel, we're only asking for one thing. The first step is to have the council pass an ordinance requesting that the Department of Revenue certify the city of Harvey as a, um, to say that we qualify to become, qualify to become a financially distressed city. Now, what does that basically mean? What's the criteria? The criteria in, in, basically is that we have, we're in the top five percent of high tax rates. We're the, we're in the, the lower five percent of tax collections. If I'm being, we're there. But the, but the numbers are the thing that's going to tell us really where we are. And that is by having the Department of Revenue to take a look at our current condition and to make sure or to verify that we make, that we meet that criteria. That is the only thing that we are asking for at this particular time. There are other parts to it. There are other things that would have to be done in the future. We're not asking for this at this particular time. Because if we don't qualify for part A, we, we can't go to part B anyway. Okay? So we're asking for, um, the council to vote in favor of this. Ultimately, it would pave the way for us to seek additional relief, which would include the appointment for some people who want to have it, for those who would love to have it, and I welcome it, and oversight, financial oversight authority to be able to come in and go over our finances and check them out and make sure everything is doing what it's supposed to do. Because unless we get a reset here, okay, which is one of the things that this administration, we were trying to figure out a way to keep the boat afloat without having to go this, this route. There are some people in this, in this audience that were members of the Harvey Coalition. I'm gonna invoke some names, Mr. Nun, Mr. Mahone. Two people that used to advocate for this thing here. And at one point or another, during the time that they were in their lives, God rest their souls, we discussed this financially distressed city law. But if we didn't have to go in that direction, we wanted to try to avoid it. Not want to give some credit to this administration and specifically all the elected officials that have participated in trying to keep us afloat during that period of time. But we're now at a point where we have to make a decision on where we're gonna be. And for those who would like to see the financial oversight, because even though we present the, the bills every two weeks, and even though the finance committee goes, uh, over the bills, and even though they're passed by the council, some people say it's still not transparent enough, you will have a financial authority to be able to do something. And your mayor got chatted away from it. Your mayor welcomes it. We welcome it. Next slide. After we do that, though, because the city of Harvey lacks the ability to pay operational expenses, I also wanna exercise my powers over the city code to allow me to coordinate activities in, in case of an emergency resulting from other causes. Which means we are going to have to have some changes in our operation until we can figure out how to do more and how to do better. Some people wanna call it a shutdown. I don't call it a shutdown. Because we're not just walking away from the city, but we are going to have to change the way that we operate because we cannot afford to pay all of the people that work for the city. We cannot afford to pay all of the bills that we need to pay. We cannot afford to pay all of the vendors that we need to pay. And just as the city shut down and operated with skeleton crews during COVID nineteen, we are going to have to restructure the way we operate now to make sure that we can afford to pay the people who work here every single day. we are going to have the necessary conversations with the necessary collective, collective bargaining bodies. We are going to follow all the rules that we are supposed to follow, but we definitely don't want them following any more unfair labor practices. Because that's just gonna cost us more money anyway. So we don't want them to do that. We're going to try to take care of as many people as we possibly can in this administration. But it would be irresponsible of us to think that we can continue to operate the city the way that we do when we know, and you have historically seen that we don't have the revenues coming in to our city the way that we need them. And we don't have the ability to bond ourselves out of it. So, um, next slide, please. So we will be able to temporarily resume operations. And we want every, and before we get there, we want everybody that I discussed, the pensions, the police empire, the arbitrators, the, um, the unions, the, the vendors. the, the vendors, the, the federal government, the state government, the county government. We want everybody to come to the table. Because I never said that I was the smartest man in the world. And so, at the end of the day, if there's someone out here that has a better idea, that can show us how to get it done, I'm with you. I always talk about if Barack Obama ran for, uh, 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 mayor of the City of Harvey, I'd go to him instead. Just because he could go ahead and possibly, possibly give us more of what we need. But, if the state control and stock seasons are restricted funds, then we free of additional revenue. If the bill, and those bills actually came on time, and people paid on time, that would give us additional revenue. If the fire pension, because the police pension, I believe is already being paid, if the, is that correct, uh, if the fire pension were renegotiated, you know, we never said we wanted to go from thirty-five percent to zero percent, I don't believe that that's right either. But we need to sit at the table and figure out how we're going to do this. Because at the end of the day, if there's no city, there's no pension. So, if the fire pension were being willing to renegotiate, are we, are full repayment of pension over a longer period of time at a lower percentage, that would help us. Okay? And the legal fees, because we also pay legal fees, is that correct? And we pay there, I think somewhere around how much, how much we pay, uh, two million? We pay there twenty, about two million dollars so far. So if we need to sit down and have a conversation. Our biggest problem now, I think, is the fact that all of these agencies were operating in their own silos, looking at their own interests. And I'm not saying that they're not supposed to protect themselves or protect the people that they represent. You know, but as they're saying, that one of the arguments unnecessary to like to hear, but you cut your nose to spite your face. And that's exactly what happened in this particular case. Next slide. If the general city or the county wasn't able to give us the ability to foreclose on tax delinquent properties, because we don't have the ability to do that. Isn't it funny, we rely on property taxes, taxes that are collected by someone else. We don't have the ability to collect those taxes. But at the same time, they're not aggressively collecting those taxes on hours that have. How is it that any city in Massachusetts, America, but specifically, you know, can have a fifty-two percent collection rate? And there's no one running out there trying to get the rest of their money? You try owing your Capital One credit card an extra five cents and see somebody going to be calling you on the phone talking about, "If this Mr. is a wet seat." No. But when we collect fifty-two percent, nobody's going to eat that. We're just allowed to exist this way. Is it that we don't deserve to have the phone now? Or what's going on? So if we can get the general city or county to give us authority to foreclose on those tax delinquent properties and taxes, it would give us the ability to put those properties back in the tax roll. You know, and we are, of course, open to any other ideas. So I think that's it. But once again, thank you so much for listening. And so now, at this particular point in time, you want to follow the, follow the rule and you guys, uh, counsel decide what it is that you want to do. Um, excuse me. Uh-uh, no, 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 no. And it's disingenuous for you to stand up in the middle of the meeting out of order. Thank you very much.
Wow.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mm-mm.
Uh, point, point of order.
Okay, we have a motion to limit automatic comment to three minutes.
Part of point of order.
Is there a second?
Point of order.
There's a motion and a second. Okay, well, there is a point of order, because there is nothing that is out of order. Um, we have a motion by the
Mayor Clark.
Point of order.
We resisted to have a point of order.
Yes.
We, that's, that's in power, and you are out of order.
I'm always out of order.
Yes, so there is a motion by the, by the fifth, and a second by the sixth, to limit automatic comment to, we are going to
Have it.
To three minutes, is that correct?
You spoke for the past hour and thirty minutes.
Right.
But you need our vote tonight.
Would you please come to order?
I'm hopeful, no questions. Other person, no arrests.
Comes to order.
He can be speaking up on behalf of the resident.
Please come forward, uh, would you call the roll man.
All the person ruins, that's the poor, okay, for all the they were. All the person Chapman?
Absolutely.
No. All the person Smith?
Yes.
All the person Keith? All the person Randall? All the person Rogers?
Yes.
Motion Carrie.
Motion Carrie, okay. So what we will do is, um, we will start with, he's the second lawyer. There's something to be said, so, um,
Could we start in the sequential order? Could we start in the sequential order?
No, we can start where the chair says that we're going to start. Do you have something to say? Please set the clock for three minutes.
Residents, I want you to pay close attention. Why would we be hindering any and or any specific debate or conversation around something that's wanting to have an everlasting impact on us for who knows how long? Tonight, you didn't hear anything more than what you already do, via Google search when you type in Eric Kimmel. What you heard tonight was a blame game. And what we need are specific measurable, you know, you ever seen the smart? We need that, a smart chart. Specific measurable, realistic, timely goals. That's not being said here. We're not having any understanding, why would I be limited to three minutes, but the mayor's going to speak to me for ninety minutes? Did you know the day that one point four million dollars dropped in our bank account on behalf of Alamo David Bank? Right, that's to support the twenty-five plus residents, because it's pretty, I'm pardon me, all employees in here. You all right here, and in the back, very few residents, but certainly employees. And that is supposed to support you all being able to work. Where is that? That's what should be up on this screen, the bank accounts. Not a slideshow depiction of what we knew happened in the previous administration. At some point in time, we have to step up and have courage enough to say what we're going to do to move the city forward. When you spend thirty-two thousand dollars, I know grant funding, I've never been granted access to any of those documents to identify that the grant funding was specific, specifically allocated to anything. Why, why would we be having, I, I mean, even this, I, I messaged Ms. Gonzalez, just forty-eight hours ago, I found out about this. Why isn't all the person, and I find it out, forty-eight hours, not, if it can't even be a forty-eight hour true, uh, posting, because we found out at one forty, via Facebook, one forty-six in my inbox. Why wasn't it sent to me on Wednesday? If we are truly having a financial uproar, why did we spend over thirty-two thousand like Ms. Askew mentioned, uh, just Sunday? When not even ten percent of the residents attended. Not even ten percent of the residents attended back in the fourth of July parade. So there it is, almost eighty thousand dollars on special events. I think we can act, just like we're going to ask downstate, the House of Representatives to push us through for the thirty million. We couldn't have asked them to support us in pivoting those funds to go to your streets, to go to the street lights, to go to abandoned properties.
Thirty seconds?
It's unfortunate, and to be muzzled. You know, Mayor Clark, I'm calling for your immediate resignation. And I'm calling for your immediate resignation because this is insanity. We're not doing anything, we're doing the same thing, and we're getting the same results. Taxpayers, you paid almost thirty thousand dollars on base with charges on the rest of me and my mother. But I'm sitting here today, free as a bird. So with that being said, the way in which, I just told you three line items over a hundred thousand dollars. The past six months, you paid four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to be in that construction code. Yet, we've seen no engineers bring the roof. And now my time is up, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Much more, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. What are we talking about here? We are talking about an ordinance to request certification and designating our city as a financially distressed city. None of it, anything else. We're talking about the beginning steps. Now, some people may say, "Well, we know our history." Well, let me tell you something. You know it, you're going to hear it, so we don't repeat it. How many times we were in school, we heard about our history. We cannot just close the door to it. We have to face it, to move over, move over, and accept it, to avoid ever repeating it again. This is what this purpose is. This is the purpose for us to sit back and say, do we collectively say, "Wait a minute, I'm paying the highest taxes here. Do I want a record of that? Darn right I do as a resident. Do I want a record that my community is the lowest collecting base? Darn right I want a record of that. That's going to help each and every one of us in our city to move forward. Nothing else, nothing more, nothing less. That's what we're voting on today. All this other stuff that we're talking about, this is what's on the agenda. This is what's on the agenda. So my question is, that's all we're voting on, correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct.
We are not voting, uh, voting on having an authority to come here and oversight our, uh, our expenses yet. Am I correct, Mr. Mayor?
Correct. We're standing here, don't you get that.
We are not voting on that today. We are voting just the beginning steps to say, "Hey, world, hey, world, City of Harvey is on the top three percent of the taxes. Wake up all the other tax everybody's." We're saying, "Hey, world, we got a three percent, um, three percent in the highest of that collective rate. We have a problem here. Somebody come and help us. We're repeating our history back in two thousand and fifteen, raising our ends. We need help in the City of Harvey. Thank you, God bless."
Sam.
Any other hands, uh, Harvey McKee, did you have any things to say?
Yeah, I got a little something to say.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, everybody, for coming on now. I'd first like to start off with the simple fact that, um, when I ran for alderman, I knew that we was a hundred, over a hundred million dollars in debt. I knew we had five thousand vacant properties. But I didn't run my campaign on that. I ran my campaign on what I can do and how I can see the city moving forward, and how I can be able to help. So when we constantly play the blame game, this happened before this, people don't talk like that around election time when you're trying to get some vote. Well, it's the cause of this, it's the cause of this. So people don't want to take accountability. You know, when you take accountability, there's no room for blame. You know, period. So once we stop talking about what happened, whatever Kellogg's supposed to did, he inherited from Nick Graves, whatever Nick Graves inherited, he inherited from Johnson. Whatever Johnson had, it came from Mayor Haines. As far as I see, Mayor Haines ain't, ain't did nothing, haven't. Okay, so that's what we want to do, we want to play this history game. The thing about it is this, we need to worry about, what are we doing right now? When the mayor gives an example, if I'm paying fifty thousand dollars and I got a loan for a car, I didn't buy the car. If I did something like this, somebody could be making my life miserable, if I got away with fifty thousand dollars. You know, how does, how does, how, how does those situations, you know, even happen? Um, where's the record of this actually happening and showing that it did? And this person is still walking around doing this to everybody, you know? We, we need to stop, okay? I was on the finance committee, along with Kobe Chapman. Monday, um, April, um, no, um, April twelfth, February twelfth, we were removed from the finance committee for asking too many questions about where our money is going. But yet, the mayor just said it himself, he named the people, they stood up and they protested. Then nobody get put out of no meeting, then nobody going to get. Okay, so what are we, we supposed to do? What type of example are we setting for people that stand on up? You know, we need to change that narrative, in my opinion, it's either poor leadership, lack of transparency from the finance company, both or neither.
Thirty seconds?
You make the decision. But this all has to stop. Because we need to stop, since we didn't took over this administration, the unnecessary fees we've incurred, the lawsuits we've incurred, the people we had laid on offer, didn't lay off nobody from City Harbor, we laid off our street workers and our police department, we just didn't leave. If we're going to keep it real, let's keep it real, let's stop blaming people. Accountability is accountability with no room for blame when you stand up for what you know you did and what you're responsible for. Thank you. Sixth word? Hey, the mic's fine on, can y'all hear me? All right, y'all know me, this is how I'm a mentality, I just had a great sixth word. First of all, giving honor to God, who is ahead of my life. I'm glad to be in the sanctuary one more time, because I wanted to go to be here. September, September the nineteenth, I was in a terrible motorcycle accident where I almost lost my life. Staples in my head, stitches in my butt, rod in my leg, and everything. But I'm here to talk about it. Now, I didn't call to talk about what I've been through, because God has already healed me, okay? One of my boys had come by my house every day at one o'clock, and he put his index finger on my chest. His name is Jesus Christ. He had already saved me. Now, I'm here for one purpose. And I wasn't going to make it here tonight, because I was full of medication, and I wasn't in the mood to come out for no nonsense. But I am so glad that our illustrious mayor had the opportunity to say what was on his mind, and if he took, um, an hour and thirty minutes, or hour and sixty minutes, or hour and ninety minutes, it wasn't enough time to know what this city is going through. I'm a resident on a, on a hundred and forty-six and Harvey Avenue for fifty-one years. No, I ain't no wildcat. I went to Parker in Chicago. I ain't no wildcat, but I was nineteen years old, and God blessed me to have seventy years, three score and ten. Okay, seventy years, he blessed me with that. And every Monday morning, I get phone calls and they ring off the hook. They say, "Hey, the garbage man didn't come." Well, don't worry, give me a minute. I call Republic and they coming. Okay, do you know what it's like not to have your garbage being able to be picked up? Do you know that I speak with Mr. Lewis Williams, just like we family members? I talk to him every day, all day, all the time, and he sets me straight as chairman of the finance committee on where we should be going as far as the city. I'm surprised, it was April seventh, twenty nineteen, when we took office. April seventh, twenty nineteen. And we've been juggling like goes over the circus for six years. And I'm wondering, how are we making payroll? How is the water department? How is the street department, plant department? Hell, yeah, you, you needed to bring B and F in. Because we didn't have qualified, certified people that was able to come to your house and come to your property. Okay, now we're getting results. Is it enough? No. Hell, yeah, I'm going to vote for it. I'm going to vote for stage one, because it's the best thing, and I want to see my, my city continue to flourish.
Thank you, uh, all of it. I hope you don't go down the line now. Third word?
Good evening, everyone, I want to thank everyone for coming out, your participation.
Can you, can you, please, has something happened to them?
Good evening. I first want to start off by saying how it's very important for us to attend these meetings. So you all, the city, the foolery, not only here, and all the other entities like the Park District, which you pay taxes for too as well, and the library, okay? which you pay taxes for too as well, and the library, okay? Transparency, since I've been alderperson, I've heard that word. So if I had some amount of money for the word transparency that's been used in here on this floor, I'd probably be rich, 'cause it's used over a kilo. It's like a dead horse. At least, we say we live in this here that we have financial oversight. Wow, we finally got that wish we've been asking for. That's financial oversight means transparency, correct? We need transparency, right? And so, after that, not only that, he explained it was a 10% surplus with grades. I mean, we had money in the bank. We had money in the bank, that's what surplus mean. He had some money. But it was after the last administration. Who we, I'm seeing we blaming. But you know when we talk about money? You know what's really interesting? Everybody sat around those whole 16 years and watched us. Let somebody dig us in the ground. Sat around quietly with both ass open. It was talked about it. And we still know, you know what they talk the other time? That that person still got a hold on the city. You can tell by how the foolery that happened. See, how everybody coming here and they tried to tear down the city the best we trying to pull it together. They still in place. You could see them, they're noticeable. And then they tell people to resign. We supposed to be working together. It's embarrassing. I can't say it enough how embarrassing it is that they feel like poor community that we have our own can that pull us down the ground like a railroad cranes. But we so educated. That makes no sense to me. That makes no sense to me. Do you say, "Introduce the people?" Why, where were you? You so passionate right now. Where were you when Kellogg was in office? Where were you? Where were you? Where were you? Yeah, and they talk about they're in the same house. They say they've been going to school and somebody gives them a presentation where my third grader can understand it and they still don't understand themselves. And they want to be mayor. Good luck with that, people, okay? Have a great night.
Thank you. Pastor Natalie, fifth ward?
Thank you. Thank you to all the residents and park heads.
Please, let's, let's still remain in order. Low is, please, thank you. Resident, turn my time. Four minutes back in the clock, please.
Chris, thank you all for being here. Look, I probably shouldn't be surprised, but I am. But I'm also just tired. I really am. We had a young lady who got up there and she said, "Look, I wanna know where we at, how did we get there, and what we gonna do to get out of it?" That's what the man did! That was it! It's like, I'm the only one with ears, can you? He showed it to you. But that's not blaming somebody. That's not blaming them. If I tell you I gotta get more oil changes and do more engine work because the previous owner didn't take care of the engine, I'm not blaming them, I'm telling you the situation. We gotta grow up. I'm serious. You mean to tell me, every single city council meeting, you get up and you say the same thing over and over? The same thing over and over? Even after you've been provided with the answer? Stop talking while I'm talking. That's being rude, sir. That's rude! This is what I'm talking about, y'all.
Let us, please, please.
This is what I'm talking about. We just old for this. The doggone people asking for all this transparency? You gonna look at the books? You gonna, we got somebody from the Department of Internal Revenue gonna look at them for you. But watch this, it ain't gonna be good enough for, for somebody else. It's not gonna be good enough. Mm, they probably worked a good job. But people ain't working with us? That's, we can't even respect each other, have a decent conversation when our elders is sitting up here and can't follow the rules? Gosh, it don't have to be this difficult. We can actually work together. But the problem is, and I figured it out, somebody else don't want that. You wanna take down because you want somebody else to do it up. You got another agenda. You got another agenda. Well, let me tell you something right here in the humps of God. Your agenda doesn't matter. God does. So we gonna keep moving? I hope. I hope and pray for you. I hope that he can deal with your attitude, deal with your heart, deal with your mind. Because it gonna make no sense that all you have to say is negative stuff out of your mouth.
Please, all of you.
No worries, yeah, I'm, I'm done. I'm about to leave this here, guys.
All right, um, for the Lord, let's, let's call all of, all of, all of the ones. But since you, I saw your hair raised up on your head. I have saw that before, like that. You know, unfortunately, we still have some Caligarians out there who, uh, seem for some odd reason, no matter what you do, if you, if you speak that man's name in a way that they don't like, they got a problem with it. You know, I remember seeing Barack Obama on television when he was talking about President Trump. And he was saying, now, what if I did the same thing? If I did the same thing that had been done between 2003 and 2019, people would be trying to burn me at the stake? And they would definitely be, would be calling for my immediate resignation now. They would have called for my immediate resignation then. They would have also called for me to be locked up. But that stuff didn't happen 'cause the Caligarians were leaving, supporting somebody who ran the city into the ground. There. When Shirley Dewinsky, when we protested, Joe Whittington, when we protested, we were removed from office. And we were illegally removed from the office. Unfortunately, um, the state's attorney, the attorney general, I believe, got involved and restored. So we were removed from office when we spoke out against what was going on at that particular point in time. That has not happened in this administration, even though there have been people who have acted in a way such as police officers and things of that nature. They still weren't removed from their position. This is not election time. It's election time for some other people, okay, who are running for office. But I'm not running for office right now and neither is the council. So you can keep that one 'cause we're not running for office. There is no place in the United States of America other than the City of Harvey that has had its police department raided twice by the federal government and once by the state. There is no place other than St. Louis that has the pension funds being intercepted by the state control and has had to deal with becoming a financially distressed city. These are unprecedented times. When you talk about leasing gentleman's clubs and providing police protection for drug dealers, those are unprecedented times. When you talk about the planning department being raided by the federal government, those are unprecedented times. And the list goes on and on and on. So, we're not talking about just what normally happens in normal situations. We are talking about situations that some of us, as the elders say, "I never thought I'd see that in my lifetime." Never! Because these are unprecedented times. And so we have to take action. Now, I always say it over and over again, from 2017 to here, y'all do what y'all need to do. I'm alright with that. I'm alright with it. Just like I respected the mayor before me and did not say and do a lot of things that I could have done. If I'm no longer in this office and we have a new one, I will respect that one too. 'Cause that's how government works. That's what they were trying to demonstrate in Washington DC when they were trying to do a peaceful transfer of power. But some people seem to can't follow the rules 'cause they want it all for themselves. You do whatever you wanna do. I don't live a hard, see, I'm, I'm Harvey boy, right? So, when this is over, we'll find something else to do. And I'm still, whatever, I'm still gonna love, God bless you. But now, we got business to take care of and we have an ordinance requesting certification and designation under the Financial Distress City laws. And the mayor was entertained, the chair was entertained, the motions were approved. Motion by the first and second by the sixth. We've already had the, uh, the debate and comments. So, matter of fact, would you please follow the rule?
Alderperson Dewinsky?
Yes.
Alderperson Chapman?
Yes.
Alderperson Smith?
Yes.
Alderperson Key?
Yes.
Alderperson Randall O?
Yes.
Alderperson Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carried. That's ordinance 3517. 3517.
Is that person left, Mr. Smith? Um, the chair was entertained, motion to adjourn. I heard a, uh, motion by the sixth, motion by the fifth. All the favor, city's about to say aye. Hold on, hold on. Before we get there, we got, we got a few things to do with this, this few national security issues. First of all, because during my presentation, I might have been a single little bit excused, but y'all keep in mind, the county has helped us fix that $2 million for that water, uh, supply line. And the county has also helped us with that 1.1B or whatever it was to sit our bank account from the bridge line. It won't get us where we need to be. But there are some people who are willing to step forward to try to help us. And speaking of that, Pastor Eric or Eddie, or the leader in charge or certainly in charge, wherever he say, I, is he up there? The, the shepherd up there, there you go. The shepherd up this block. We wanted to thank him and Eric, his team and, and all of the members for allowing us to use this space. Um, I hope that, who, who else is talking on your media? Come on. Sometimes we can get a little, we can get a little rowdy. But I hope that we didn't do anything to the, to the father that's a sanctuary. And I hope that, uh, eventually God will be pleased with us. All right? That, that being said, there's a motion to adjourn and there's a second. All the favor, city's about to say aye.
Aye.
Those polls, hearing done, they stand adjourned at 8:28 PM. Thank you very much, and. Have a good rest of your week, have a weekend. Thank you.
Cause he allowed, I don't know if it was just because you guys were here, um, but he allowed more, you know, talking. Right, I mean, not all the time. Right, I mean, that's why I said, sometimes you have, often I'm just curious. Okay, bye, Justin. Alright guys, thanks for being here. I'm sorry, I didn't forget y'all. I just went to try to see if we could get a statement from, oh, the vote, it was unanimous, forget. Um, I wanted to, to get some feedback from the firefighters, uh, but I think there are spokesmen left, so. So it didn't happen. Uh, but I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do recap when I get home anyway. So if you guys, you guys just stay tuned and I will be doing that, so. So we have Alderwoman Shirley, let's give the first ward. I think that's Pastor maybe, and then Amanda. I think those are some real estate folks. Now, are you guys affected by any of that, the paramedics? No? Okay. Yeah, cause it's like separate contract, right? Okay, okay. No, I'm glad that you guys came.
Yeah.
Because they, I mean, they've been treated horribly for years, so. That's why I eliminated the mayor, so I looked back and I was like, oh my God, he wants you to help pay for the. So I'm like, I want to get a quote from their union person. But thank you, thanks, thank you for everything. Oh, this is nice. Look at breast cancer. Very nice. This is great. She looks so professional. Great job, Colby.
Thank you, great job.
Thank you for speaking up as always. Thank you. I hope Mr. Gower's okay. I saw you clapping over there. Good job, good job. It's such a big church, I've never been here.
Nah, I said not in the house of the Lord. I was gonna spit that, the Genesis that do the rhyme to me, that shit ass on y'all.
Hey, Colby is definitely. She's taking some awesome, um, you know, mayorly leadership. I'm very proud of her. She's really speaking up, um, on behalf of the residents, so. As you all know, she is running. So we have some police cars out on one hundred forty seventh. We're at this church, St. Mark's on one hundred forty seventh and Lincoln. Um, still not quite sure why they wanted to have the meeting at the church. I guess they said they were expecting a lot of people. So, um, here is the Alderwoman, she's just speaking with the firefighters right here. And then we have, um, some of the police officers are still kinda hanging out here. Which a lot of them recognize, not all, but. And then we have, we have some of our other sergeants. We have Sergeant Patterson. Right here. Then we have. Where Rick Seth is gone. I saw him walk out, but then I didn't see.
Hey, how you doing?
So yeah, we're gonna. See, people are, they're not pretty quickly, but it is so nice not to be rushed off the property. Those of you that have tuned into city council meetings before, you know how the police often, um, you know, rush us off, uh, push us off the, the city, um, out of city hall like we're criminals. So this is so nice to be able to take our time a little bit. Hey, Ms. Amanda, hey, do you want to, I was asking you for commentary, but you're good. I'm like, would you like to provide citizen commentary from tonight's meeting, miss?
I don't like when people play on my face and say and do these grandiose presentations when you wasn't asking the basic questions. If you inherited a hundred and sixty four million dollars in debt, what have you done in your two terms to decrease the debt of any kind? We have the Department of Revenue that gives a report on the city council meetings, but we don't know how much revenue we got coming.
And did you, I, I know I saw a few people, or heard a few people asking about our elected treasurer. So what, what do you think, I, I didn't see her tonight, I don't think she was here. But how do you feel about that? Cause I know, I'm like, well gee, she's our elected treasurer, shouldn't she be? They should have her involved in this. And it's like, they're totally, what, pushing her out of this process or what?
So in my experience is going to the finance committee meetings, um, it's usually the comptroller talking and the comptroller talking to the finance committee and the comptroller talking with the mayor. It feels like in my opinion that they shut the treasurer out. So the, and then the mayor did a presentation first quarter, from back in March, about who does what as far as the treasury's concerned. And his presentation was pretty explicit that the comptroller manages the purse strings of the city. So in my opinion, although yes, she is an elected treasurer, I do feel like the decision making is mostly coming from the comptroller, the finance committee and the mayor. And they're shutting her out. That's my opinion.
Oh, and that's a good point, cause you know what? Speaking of that, we didn't really get the figures from Clark's six years in office. We did not hear from the comptroller. And Louis Williams is the comptroller and, um, he was actually comptroller under Kellogg as well for a lot of, a lot of years under, under Kellogg. Why do you think that he was quiet tonight? Do you have any opinions on that?
Well, when you are part of the foolery, you don't want to put the fun on yourself. If I'm doing the foolishness, I won't tell you what I'm doing. You see it.
Cause I definitely saw him there. But I was, I kept expecting them to call him up. I'm like, well, if anybody should know about the money.
A financial report, but the comptroller didn't present and neither the treasurer, only the mayor.
Right.
Right.
So, so here's another question. Is Mayor Clark, is he just trying to do everything in the city? Is that why he, it, it just seems like he, he always speaks for everyone?
I would speak too if I'm, if I want everything to look the way I want it to look. If somebody, if an employee or another person is going to give an opinion that's different than mine, I don't want you to speak either. Cause I, it's my show. I want it to look how I want to look. I run the show. So I'm gonna speak. You give me this and I'll say it. Cause I don't want you to get up there and oops, tell the truth.
Hmm, okay. And then do you have a reaction for, I know, uh, the mayor mentioned that the, the firefighters could, could take a hit to their, um, to their pension, that they could renegotiate to help the city. Um, he also mentioned employees' deunions. You know, that, that blaming, basically blaming the employees for the crisis and that again, that they could sort of, I guess, take cuts in salaries or benefits or whatever, but what do you think about that? Cause those are the people that take, they really take care of us. They're the frontline people who actually do city services.
So when I think about first responders and I think about other municipalities, it's always important that pensions of the first responders are paid. I don't care what's going on. You have to make sure that it's paid because then you have litigation and things like this. And the fact that you would even try to even mention, oh, could we negotiate with our first responders?
We're just doing reaction.
That's very, that gives me pause. It, it, it really gives me pause. But again, seven years of this, this just didn't happen overnight. If you inherited a mess, what did you do to say, okay? What do I, what, what's the budget? What does this look like? Are, are the pensions okay? We're working with unions, is this okay? When you inherited it seven years ago. We're not talking about something that just happened three months ago.
Right, right.
So it took you seven years to say, ah, help.
Did we hear anything tonight, tell our viewers, did we hear anything tonight about what Mayor Clark and his administration has done the past six, seven years to fix things?
No. Everything was about Kellogg. It was all about what Kellogg did.
If all else fails, blame Kellogg. If all else fails, blame Kellogg.
No, wait, wait. What's the new term? What did he call us?
Blame Kellogg.
Kelloggians, Kelloggians or something.
I've never heard that before.
And guess what? I never voted for Kellogg. Never.
And was that you, I, I know I said something, I heard when Talani Smith said something like, well, we never heard you guys speaking up under Kellogg. I know I spoke up, but I heard a, a, another person say, hey, no, I did. Cause she was saying, where were all of you during Kellogg?
I was there undergrad.
Right.
Yeah, they should tell y'all this, but I mean, the disrespect, it's just stupid. It's like, they are allowed to be disrespectful to the, to the people and to Alderwoman Chapman. They are allowed to do so, but when, when we respond, it's a problem. How's it a problem?
Right.
I'm only gonna give you what you give me.
Right.
It's not, it's not just disrespectful in words, but disrespectful in your actions. Disrespectful how you manage the funds of this city. Disrespectful when you vote on things that you know would be more of a harm than a help to the city. That's the major disrespect here. And then on top of that, you want to be snooty with your words when you've already, the, the political damage is already done. It's, 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 it hurts.
Yeah. And do you think the ma, I'm, I'm a little concerned for the mayor's health. He, he looked a little thin tonight. I don't know, there's something with his voice. I don't know if he was nervous or sick, but is there, do we know, is there, is, is, is he okay?
Who?
The mayor? Did you notice? I, I thought you looked, yeah, I thought you looked a little thin. Did you think, or have you heard anything?
I don't be looking at him like that.
Okay.
The teeth just throws me off. I can't, I'm just, I mean, I'm being honest, their teeth just throw me off.
If you guys have questions, feel free. Oh, uh, Josie says, why is it that's so important now? What do you think started the fire? So to speak.
We inherited debt and so now I think it's gotten to the point where we can't keep covering it up now. It's getting to the point where we're like, okay, our hands are out.
This didn't start again overnight. It didn't, it didn't start sixteen years ago. It didn't start twenty years ago. It started when Haynes was in office. Haynes took the funding. He went and got the funding and took it and they never found out what it was used for. And so Harvey will never receive that type of funding again. And this was in, in the seventies.
So in other words, corruption's not new to Harvey.
Exactly. And then he left word, he told Mayor Johnson when Johnson won, being the first African American or black mayor of the city of Harvey, he told him what he had done. He told him that he had left this city in a maze. And we would not find out. It would be too late. Once we found out how to get out of it.
Oh, wow, okay.
He said this. I, I posted all this stuff.
You should find those quotes too.
I did, I posted it. It's on, it's on Facebook. I posted it. Again, I reposted it. Because these are the things that we need to bring up and talk about. People are not talking about that stuff. This is why this stuff is going on. It didn't just start during Kellogg. It didn't start during Nick.
Right.
It started when Haynes felt that the good old boys fell out of commission. They saw that the, that it was, and that, and that's exactly what it said in the, I, I posted.
Okay.
It changed. He couldn't deal with the change, which a lot of that happened in Harvard because when we came in seventy three, being the only black family in that area, we got, we went through it. So we were purposely put in a decline on purpose.
So you think the city's still coming out of that?
I mean, I don't think that it's coming out because everybody is still being greedy and they're taking and they're steady taking and they're steady taking. Nobody is trying to come up out of it. They steady trying to find slicker ways of getting what they want to get. And then they want to, the blame game. Oh, well, so and so did this and it was that, nobody said nothing this, this many years ago. Where was you, she wasn't even living here. You know what I'm saying? Like, come on now, stop playing these games with us. Stop playing in our faces. We have been here and generations and generations been passed down. People been living here since the, the, the beginning of Harvard. Well, South Lawn. I can, I can say that. You know what I mean? People, families been here since it was South Lawn. Now all of a sudden, nobody knows what's going on. Oh, wow. It was Kellogg. But Kellogg walking around, that man walk around every day. That man lived on one hundred and fiftieth and walk around every single day. And then Clark have said in the meetings that, uh, oh, I love Kellogg.
That's true. I've heard that.
For everything, but you say you love him though.
So it's, it's really just, there's a lot of confusion. No clarity, no, no answers tonight.
None at all.
Okay.
No clarity at all. It's all, it's all to throw people off. To keep people from asking questions. That's all it is.
Isn't this nice? Now, what do you guys notice is different versus when we have this, the meetings at city hall? You notice that we're not being rushed off?
You can't, how can you?
Isn't that so nice though?
This is not the city hall. He can't, and they really not supposed to do that city hall.
I was gonna say, isn't that how it should be at city hall every week? Like, we're peaceful. We're not like throwing Molotov cocktails or everything. They, they usually, you'll have to come to a meeting we have at, at the city hall, but usually the police like in riot formation will like push us out. We're so peaceful.
I got told before I came here to be prepared to be followed to my car.
Yeah, we were, and we're like, uh.
Told it? Yeah.
They, they prepared you. Good.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
Well, thank you, Chappelle.
It's really sad that all of this is happening. You know what I'm saying? I mean, and true, I do agree with some of the things that they say that we do need to work together. I do agree with that. But when you have been shysty ever since you been in politics. You know what I'm saying? Cause I can recall back in like twenty thirteen when he was running for school board. Christopher Clark. And, and what's crazy is I didn't even know, remember this to my cousin, cause she stayed right down the street from him.
What board did he run for?
He was running for the school board.
Which one? One fifty two?
One fifty two.
Oh, okay.
And at that time, I wasn't living in Harvard. But my kids were, were living with my dad and they were still going to school at a one fifty two. And I was waiting to pick my son up from school. And he was like, sign my petition. I said, I don't live out here because my board registration and everything was listed in Chicago Heights. He said, but why are you here then? I said, I'm picking my son up from school. Well, you can just, you can sign it anyway.
Oh, so that was like your first experience of him with politics? Oh, no.
So if you was willing to do that for a petition, what you, what you would do for a seat again, to do what you doing?
Right. Exactly.
You know, but again, like I said, it's sad that this is what's going on. Nobody is trying to take the initiative to make the corrections and do what's, what's better for our community. They see the community is sinking. It is, it's, I mean, and all the jobs he had when he was the attorney for building and planning. He got booted off because he wasn't doing his job. He wasn't getting the houses demolished like he was supposed to.
Yeah, cause I was saying, now Chris Clark was, uh, attorney for the library, right?
Yes.
I believe he was fired from that.
Fired from that too.
Okay.
Fired from the Park District.
Oh, and.
And soon.
Did you see, I, I think I shared it with some people, but I, I should share it again, but he currently has a malpractice lawsuit. I don't know if you saw that.
Probably do, but I know a lot of, I've, I've talked to plenty of people, families that had said that he, he's taken their money and never showed up to court. And I, I mean, this is quite a few families. So, I mean, you bragging about being a, an attorney, but you suck.
Right.
So what am I, I'm supposed to be proud of that? You know what I'm saying? But again, you know, they need to do better.
Yes.
Harvey needs to do better, period.
Absolutely. And feel free, ask questions, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Just don't mind me filming, but.
Get out of here soon, but can I get your, first of all, is it okay to quote you in the paper?
Uh huh, sure.
Uh, my name's Evvy Lewis, by the way. I'm a reporter for the Daily South Town.
Okay. I'm Chappelle Hooks.
I was gonna ask, how do I spell your name?
C, C H A. P E L L E.
Josie, that's a really good question. I just saw your question. I don't know. It's a very good question. We need to find that out though. It's a really good question, actually. Josie just asked, um, if the financial bailout doesn't work, do you know what the next steps or plan would be? And I said, I don't know.
No, I don't, no, we don't know.
I really don't know. That's a good question.
That is a good question. I should have asked him that.
It's like, oh, is this his hail, this is his hail mary?
I didn't even think of that.
I think the state has something in play.
This is probably the mayor's private vehicle that he gets driven around in usually is one of the, one of the. It's one of the, one of the, uh, newer SUVs like this, with all the tinted windows. So I don't know if he's already in already, or they're waiting to escort him out, but that's typically what he rides around in. My guess is they're probably gonna escort him out, maybe? If he's not out already, but isn't that usually his SUV? The mayor gets driven around. He is a driver, so thank you so much, thank you guys. Alright, you guys, so I will, I'm gonna end for now, but we'll talk, I'll do, um, a recap in a little bit. Thanks, everybody.